Good afternoon. This regular meeting of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners is called to order at 3:01 PM on September 14th, 2021. Commissioner Cummings, would you like to introduce the pastor who will provide the invocation today? Ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We are blessed to have with us Reverend Elwood. I believe he's in the audience, and he will be providing the invocation.
God, our Creator, our Sustainer, who has allowed us to enjoy the beauty and majesty of another day, we pray now your presence upon these proceedings. We pray that your hand of mercy and heart of love will always lead us and guide us. Thank you for our city and county government, and we pray that as we move forward, that everything will go according to the way that the citizens of our state and our county and our city will be as blessed as they possibly can be. In your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor Elwood for that invocation and for joining us today. And Commissioner Cummings, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you very much Commissioner Cummings. Commissioners, we are now at awards and presentations. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we were presentation of the AARP Age Friendly Designation to Leon County.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Laura Cantwell. I'm with AARP Florida, and it is my honor to welcome Leon County to the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities. Leon County joins over 566 communities across the nation and six states and one territory who are working to become even more age-friendly. I look forward to working with the county on this designation and this process. I look forward to working with Nikki Payden, Susan Poplin, Sheila Seiler, and Susan to get this work moving forward, and also with my colleague in Tallahassee, Christopher Turner. We look forward to working closely with you on this initiative. And today, it is my honor to introduce Secretary Richard Prudhomme with the Florida Department of Elder Affairs, who will be providing the in-person presentation and remarks about the work that's happening at livable Florida, which is being led through the secretary's office. Thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Secretary, thank you very much for being here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here today as Leon County celebrates joining the AARP Age Friendly Network of Communities. As you know, the city of Tallahassee joined the network back in 2015. You know, but today is much more than receiving a certificate. It represents a serious commitment to ensuring that local residents can live well but also age well. I think it's worth mentioning that Florida is the third most populous state in the nation with over 21 million people. Five and a half million of those residents are actually over the age of 60, and throughout the next decade, the population is expected to increase to almost 7.4 million, an increase of 35%. Here in Leon County, there are about 58,000 people over the age of 60. However, it should be noted that there are another 34,000 folks right behind them aged between 50 and 59. Everything points to the fact that the communities that fare best in the 21st century will be those that do what you're doing here today, working to tackle the challenges and embracing the positive possibilities that an aging population creates, and essentially establishing an age-friendly livable community. And even though the COVID-19 pandemic has disrupted communities throughout Florida over the last 18 months, that statement still remains true. In April of 2019, it was my honor to join the governor and AARP to announce Florida as the first state in the South and only the fourth across the nation to receive the Age Friendly Designation. And I do want to express my sincere thanks to the governor for his leadership during this initiative, for prioritizing older adults, and for encouraging and supporting us as we work to spread livable communities across the state. In embracing the Age Friendly Designation, the governor envisioned a Florida where older adults and indeed all Floridians will thrive in livable communities where they will not only live, but live well and age well. Age-friendly livable communities are supportive, they're inclusive, they're respectful. They prioritize person-centered and affordable healthcare, appropriate and affordable housing, and access to different transportation options. They provide equal access to social support networks and opportunity for all to participate in community life. Livable communities are also dementia-aware, dementia-caring, where families affected by Alzheimer's disease or other dementias can still live full, engaged lives after the diagnosis. You may have to live with dementia, but you can still live well with dementia. And ensuring that our communities are safe and free from abuse, neglect, and exploitation is critical, and it is our utmost goal to enable residents to age with dignity, purpose, and independence. Floridians will embrace these livable communities because they will build be communities where they'll want to live, work, and play, thereby enhancing the economic, civic, and social vitality of the community. You know, age-friendly is a process, and the outcome is a truly age-friendly state that we call livable Florida. So on behalf of the Department of Elder Affairs, AARP, and the 40 other age-friendly communities in Florida, welcome to the Age Friendly Network, and we do look forward to working with you to ensure that your families, your friends, and your neighbors can all live and live and age well. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do have a certificate for you, which I can leave with anybody.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, thank you very much for taking the time to be here. I know you've got an entire state to lead, so we're very grateful for your time here. You know, any comments from the commissioners? You know, I've had the honor and pleasure of working with some really great community leaders in town over the years. Choose Tallahassee has been an organization to market to retirees around the country to come relocate here to Tallahassee, highlighting the things that seniors would find appealing about this area. And then also Domi Station, which is our entrepreneurial laboratory, has done a lot to promote its new program called Third Act, which is a way to basically reach out to folks that are 50 years of age or older, enticing them to start their new career. So that's just a couple of examples of what we've done here in Tallahassee. Any other comments from the other commissioners on this? Really terrific designation, very grateful for it. Leon County is an age-friendly community, and this is a very, very big deal.
Mr. Chair, could I add to that comment that you just made?
Yes, sir.
I think it's relevant. You know, people over the age of 50 in Florida constitute about 40% of the population, but they contribute about 56% of the gross domestic product. It's about $480 billion. They refer to it as a longevity economy. So really, you know, obviously, a lot of older adults have disposable income, and the more you encourage them to come to your community, the more they will spend that money and create jobs. I think that's something that you alluded to there, so thank you for bringing that up, sir.
You're very welcome, sir. Thank you very much for coming again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is your coronavirus update portion of the agenda, and I can tell you that not much has changed operationally since our special meeting. And so with that, I'd like to hand it off to our Health Department Director, Claudia Blackburn, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Claudia?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and County Manager. Thank you for having me. So I'm just going to give you a high-level COVID update, some of it you've heard before, but it's worth repeating. I'm going to talk about the current status of cases, testing availability in the community, where we are with vaccinations, the monoclonal antibody treatment, reduction and prevention strategies, and community outreach and vaccination clinics. So here we are with our new case and positivity rate for the week beginning September the 3rd, and for that week, our positivity rate was 10.7% with 1,662 cases. So you can see, it looks like we have come off of our peak, which was the week of August the 6th, and we plateaued for a few weeks, and we're making a very, made a very slight decline last week. So we're really monitoring closely to see what's going to happen next. There, one of the things that is important when there are a lot of cases is to make sure that people have testing available so that they know their status. They know if they're positive, and if they're concerned at all about symptoms, they have places to go that are easily accessible. So we've got a site at 2965 Municipal Way, the Leon County Health Department Administration Building. It's right next door to the sheriff. It's open seven days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And also Lake Jackson Public Library, Huntington Oaks, North Monroe, and that is open seven days a week from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. And then, of course, FAMU has moved to 2507 Wanish Way, and that has been the busiest site in town for months. And that site is open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00. Various CVS and Walgreens throughout the county provide free testing, and also at the Old West Enrichment Center on Lake Bradford Road. This site is run by Curative, and they're open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00. So where are we with vaccinations? Well, we're a little bit better than we were a week ago. We're at 59% of eligible people being vaccinated with at least one dose. So the state is at 69%, so we have a ways to go, but we are seeing some progress over the last couple of months. Charmaine presented about this last week, but it's worth mentioning again that there is a third dose of the mRNA vaccines, that's Moderna and Pfizer. They are recommended for people with moderately to severely compromised immune systems. They should receive an additional dose of these vaccines, whichever one they got originally, at least 28 days after the second dose. So according to the CDC, people with moderately to severely compromised immune systems are especially vulnerable to COVID-19 and may not build the same level of immunity to the two-dose vaccine series compared to people who are not immunocompromised. So it is recommended, and there are multiple places to go to receive. Any place that does COVID vaccinations will give the third dose. It is different than the booster that everybody's talking about right now, so we're still waiting on directions on the booster dose, when and if it comes. Also, again, the monoclonal antibody treatment is available at the following locations, Sears at Governor's Square and CDR Health on Capital Circle Northeast. Monoclonal antibody treatment is for people that have COVID, that it's been like in the first eight days after their symptoms begin or after their test is positive. And it's also for people who have been exposed to COVID-19. These are for, this is for people who are at high risk of developing severe illness and disease. It is easily accessible. It is a State of Florida initiative, and we really encourage people to access this if they have COVID and they're worried about getting really sick, and they can contact their doctor and discuss it, but it's not, you can self-refer to these sites. So it's important to remind everyone what they can do to reduce and prevent COVID, and masks are one of those things. According to the CDC, you should wear a mask in indoor public places if you're not fully vaccinated and you're two or older, or if you're fully vaccinated in an area of substantial or high transmission, which we are at this time, to maximize protection from the Delta variant and prevent possibly spreading it to others. And of course, social distancing is really important, at least six feet between you and other people who live outside of your home, and avoid close contact with people who are sick. And then hand washing is good for everything, 20 seconds with soap and water, and that will also help us during flu season. All of these things will help us during flu season. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about community outreach and vaccination clinics that the Health Department has been involved in. So at the beginning of the summer, the Department of Health Leon Outreach Team began integrating COVID vaccination education referrals into our existing outreach programs that address chronic disease prevention and control. So we do this anyways. We added COVID to that, and we have partnered with a number of organizations to do this. We've also increased our staff from two to five people, and we're focused on communities of color with these services. So listed on this slide are some of the groups that we partner with to conduct outreach, Mount Olive Affordable Housing and Community Development, Tallahassee Urban League, and then other critical partners such as MACHA, Jewels, Covenant Network, FAMU Student Health Services, Florida State School of Medicine, and many more. We also work with faith-based organizations and a lot of local businesses. We do outreach and education at all of the places listed here, Piggly Wiggly, Family Dollar, barber shops, beauty shops, coffee shops, restaurants, gyms, nail salons, hotels. And we, our staff will set up a table, they will go in and visit with the manager and visit with staff, and really explain, you know, not just about vaccinations, but everything that they can do to reduce the transmission of COVID. And so we're trying, developing relationships so that people trust what they're hearing. And, you know, an example of that is that our staff has really developed a relationship with Mama Dee, and she now is, you know, has always been, but now is really very knowledgeable about COVID and all the resources available, and, you know, she's a trusted voice in a trusted place in the community for people to get information that they need. So that is what I have to share this afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Blackburn, thank you as always for your update. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Commissioner Jackson?
Claudia, I frequently, I just want to draw you the questions, but I never start with a thank you. So let me start with a thank you because it's always, you have to see the effort. Is that better? That we are performing here in Leon County. I saw the little chart that had the bar graph, and I did a little bit of homework, and it could have been wrong because I was never a great homework doer. But on August 27th, we were at 9.93. On September the 7th, we were at 9.7, and then today, or actually yesterday morning, we were at 8.69. Are those numbers correct or wrong as far as positivity rate?
So were you looking at the CDC website?
Yes.
Okay, so there's two sources of data, and they're not, they're for different time periods. This data is what the State of Florida Department of Health puts out. I just, I stick with that because it's just for us, that's, it's more consistent for us, but they're both correct. I don't know the timeframe for the CDC's.
Okay.
It may be more or less current.
But I think both of those demonstrate that it was, that we've seen that bar graph start to decline since.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the main point.
Thank you again, as always, for all of the work you've done.
You're welcome.
I didn't see them mentioned specifically when you talk about faith-based organizations, but we're super excited to be pairing with Bethel Church and their mobile vaccination van and testing unit that's coming to the Fort Braden community. I'll say more about that later, but thank you again for all the information.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jackson. Ms. Blackburn, thank you also. Commissioners, before we move in further, I'd like to entertain a...
I'd like to ask one question.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry. If you'd like to speak, you can fill out a speaker card and speak during the non-intended items. Ma'am, I'm sorry. This is a public meeting. We've got business to conduct here. Thank you. Commissioners, if you wouldn't mind, let me entertain a motion to allow Commissioner Dozier, who's participating virtually, to participate in the meeting today. Would someone be willing to make a motion of that effect?
No.
It's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. All is in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries 5 to 0 with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers as well as Commissioner Proctor on, sorry, Commissioner Dozier on virtually. Commissioner Dozier, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier, did you have any questions or comments from Ms. Blackburn before we continue?
Um, yes, sir. And quickly, is she our only presenter for this portion of the agenda, or do we have other people who will be presenting on COVID-19?
That would conclude the COVID-19 update with Ms. Blackburn, Commissioner Dozier.
Okay. And just because I'm juggling virtually and I, or on the phone, I apologize for the inconvenience for everyone. The add-on item, we will discuss that later in the meeting, not at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. My only question, great update from Ms. Blackburn, thank you very much. I guess I want to say first, I was with a family member Friday night who tested positive Saturday morning, and she had gotten a test in an abundance of caution, thank goodness. So I was exposed and I'm quarantined. I used our VaxMash to find testing, as many other folks in her sphere did, and it worked exceptionally well, and the new locations work very well as well. So we've gotten some real-time experience with this. Claudia, although we seem to have hit a plateau based on the numbers we got from the Health Department last Friday, we were at 10.7 positivity rates, which was a slight increase from 10.5 the week before, and I still think that is significantly higher, if my memory serves from where we were certainly last spring, but even in the summer of 2020. And my question is, and you just kind of answered a little bit of this in response to Commissioner Jackson, what metrics, what are we looking for to see if we might have another surge? I mean, is it still the positivity rate and hospitalization? And the second question is, is there any way to get more real-time data for our community? I think you all have done a great job in working with our hospitals, but we know there's been some challenges around the state, and I'm just wondering if there's any other way for us to track these metrics so that we can get ahead of another surge if it happens?
Commissioner Dozier, thank you for those questions. I made a mistake. I should have entertained the motion for your participation in the meeting before presentations, but I waited until after, and Ms. Blackburn has already left the building. So what I'd like to do is ask the county administrator to record those questions of yours, ask those questions of Ms. Blackburn, and have her respond to us at a later time. Is that right? It is my mistake. I apologize for doing this in slightly different order than would have been optimal.
That would be fine to get an answer back. Mr. Chair, I'll just add to that. In conversations with our hospital administrators and others, we have had a lot of questions come in from citizens about other mitigation steps. I know we're going to talk about some of those in the agenda item later in the meeting. But it was suggested to me by one of our hospital administrators that if we could have a discussion about those metrics and looking to see if and when another surge is going to happen, that will help us understand better what mitigation efforts we could do and when to do them. So that is the real question, and significantly, I was going to ask Ms. Blackburn, I hope this doesn't happen, but if we are going to see a surge, say with large outdoor events like football or concerts, might we see that in two weeks or three weeks? So if county administrator can add that into the question, I think we would all benefit from just a better understanding of kind of what we may be looking at in the next few weeks.
That sounds good, Commissioner Dozier. We'll make sure to add that to the list of questions that the county administrator will ask of Ms. Blackburn. Again, my apologies. Moving on, Commissioners to consent. Commissioners, as you know, we've had items number three and number 19 pulled from the consent agenda, and also item number 18 has been removed. Mr. County Administrator, are there any additional agenda items pulled from consent?
You've covered it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much.
(Inaudible).
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Jackson to approve the remaining consent items, which is all but number three, number 18, and number 19 from the consent agenda. It's been made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All is in favor of the motion as stated? Say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay, Commissioner Dozier, do you vote yea or nay on this motion?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes 6-0 with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item pulled from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three is the public notice of the 2022 tentative board meeting schedule and the proposed 2022 board travel schedule. This is an item that comes to you this time each year, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, which commissioner has pulled this from consent?
Commissioner Dozier.
Okay, Commissioner Dozier, would you please, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, it's a bit cumbersome being on the phone, I understand that. I pulled this item last September. We discussed adjusting our meeting schedule, and we eliminated, as you all know, the second Tuesday meeting, not every month of the year, but in most months of the year. And I wanted to pull it to raise the issue. First, we discussed this at the June 2020 meeting and again in September of 2020 before we had two new members with us. And in June of 2020, in the analysis from staff, 54 counties out of 67 hosted two meetings per month in the months that they met. So we are now in the minority of counties around the state. I've looked at the agenda and been thinking about this a good amount over the last year. While I do absolutely believe this reduces the amount of time we have to listen or to hear from constituents and respond to their issues, and that is a concern, I want to point to the March 9th meeting, which in my memory, and I believe the county administrator might be able to confirm this, it was the first time in 11 years that an agenda item was distributed at the board meeting. There was no advance notice to the public, we didn't get to read it before, and it was something we had seen in the past, so that it was, I mean, it was acceptable to do that within our rules, but I voted against it because I think that's just a bad practice. So, Mr. Chair, I would love to hear from others. I would like to make a motion to bring this back at the next meeting so that we could all benefit from the same analysis we had in 2020 and look at our meeting schedule for the coming year. Just for my part, I think it's better to have the meetings on the books and cancel them if we're not, if they're not needed than to ever be in the circumstance again when we pass out an agenda item that we haven't had time to review before the meeting. So again, my motion is to bring this back at the next meeting with the analysis we had from 2020 and have a discussion about our meeting schedule going forward.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Moving on to discussion, any comments? Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, I made the subsequent motion to accept staff recommendation on item number three.
Motion's been made, second, a motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson to accept the tentative meeting schedule. Any discussion? Let me go ahead and jump in. I, you know, I, you know, last year when we discussed this and we made the decision to change the number of meetings, you know, I spoke very strongly about the, my desire not to change, you know, and at the end, before we voted, I said, with the proposed schedule, I said that a reasonable person could look at this schedule, a reasonable commissioner could look at this new revised schedule and think that it could work. And, you know, I don't fault someone for taking a look at that schedule then as well as this schedule now and thinking, this is a good economy of time in terms of making sure that we cover our bases, conduct the people's work in a streamlined fashion as much as possible, while still being able to cover the issues. I think a reasonable person could make that assumption. I still feel that the original format that we had of roughly two meetings a month is something that the public expects, and so I'm going to be voting against the motion. But I respect the folks. It's just simply a matter of disagreement. I can understand why you all would vote for this. I for one, I'm going to vote against it, though. Any other comments? All right, moving on to a vote. All right, moving on to a vote of the substitute motion as stated by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay. Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am? Nay. Okay, so the motion, the motion carries four, four in favor, two opposed. Those in dissension are myself and Commissioner Dozier. Mr. County Administrator, would you please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, we did not have any speakers on that issue?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to the next item pulled from consent, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item pulled from consent is item number 19 by Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. On this item, my wife is an independent contractor with Hamilton Realty Advisors. She does not have contracts in the Summerfield Development for which she would receive compensation. Thus, I do not believe that a conflict exists. However, other Realtors with Hamilton Realty Advisors do have active contracts for properties in Summerfield. For this reason, I will recuse myself based on the appearance of a conflict pursuant to Section 286.012 Florida statutes. So I will be recusing myself from this vote. Mr. County Administrator, are there any public speakers for this item?
There are none.
All right. Commissioners, any discussions, any motions? All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? CNN will move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion passes five-zero with myself in recusing and then Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator, any other items pulled from consent?
There are none.
All right, we are now at citizens to be heard on non-agenda items, non-agenda items.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I thought that I had written down three, 18, and 19, but it was just three and 19?
18 was removed.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Item number 18 from the agenda for consent has been removed.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are now at citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have several speaker cards in for citizens on non-agenda items. The first speaker is Barbara Brown.
Ms. Brown, thank you very much for being here today. Would you please, as you come up to the podium, would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
I'm Barbara Brown. I live in Leon County. I have a granddaughter at Gilchrist School, and I appeared to the school board for the same reason I'm appealing to you. I understand that you are considering mask mandates, and I understand that your vaccine mandate for all county employees has been passed. I respect your work for the county. I truly prefer to leave that business to you, but when your beliefs conflict with my beliefs, I feel it my responsibility as a citizen to come forward and say, the only reason I'm wearing this mask is because you wouldn't allow me to speak without it. I have a health strategy, but it is not any ways close to what I've heard, and I understand you have the oversight over lots of people, and I respect that that's a huge responsibility. But when your opinions, in my opinion, when your opinions begin to be forced on county employees or students, and a mandate is given, I believe in you have overstepped your bounds of authority. I believe that that is becoming an abuse of power, and I just want to speak out and caution you to consider what you're doing. Because, in my opinion, you're going down a long road of forcing citizens to do what they believe is not good or right. And when you force us to do what we believe is not good or right, we're only left to be criminalized for simply living our lives as we have always been good citizens. We have not, we have tried to contribute to the community, not take away from it. So I just caution you, and I, please, you know, you are the body who is considering this, so I'm coming to you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Brown, thank you very much for coming. Next, we have our Leon County Supervisor Elections, Mr. Mark Early. Mr. Early, thank you very much for being here, sir.
Chairman Minor, thanks for the opportunity. Commissioners, hi, I'm Commissioner Maddox. Good to see you again. Been a great help with our canvassing boards. I'm here to speak to the attention that the commission is giving to supporting an initiative that's being presented, I think, through the Florida Association of Counties and certainly through the Florida Supervisors of Elections to exempt election workers and their families from public records requests for their personal identifying information. As I think that you've probably seen throughout the news, there's a large focus and a big problem that's not, I wouldn't say it's brewing, it's a full force, where there's lots of very real threats to election workers. It hasn't hit Florida in a huge way yet, but some of the problems nationwide, I think, have been very well documented in the news. I was part of a joint task force Zoom call, and it's going to be an ongoing process with the Department of Justice and FBI and Secretaries of States and local election officials, where they're really putting a focus on this. There's other federal attempts to work towards solving this or dealing with the problem. But really, our biggest threat comes at the state and local level, where the ability for, in Florida especially, the public information as part of the voter rolls is open to anyone that asks for it. Section 119, sub, I think it's 071, a Florida statute, has a whole set of exemptions to those. And our association, I believe, Florida Association of Counties, is sponsoring some legislation to try and add election workers to that. So I would humbly ask for y'all's support on that, and I would, I think it will go a long way towards protecting our workers and keeping the ability for us to get poll workers. We're already seeing a decline in interest, and that's unfortunate. Quite a few of my peers, supervisors of elections throughout the state, are looking to retire and not run in the next election cycle, 2024, when we're all up. So it's a big issue. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Early. Really appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I understand this is the portion that we will not be discussing anything, but I kind of wish that would have been a presentation, this is just amongst us. Because I want to remember to bring it up later. Madam Attorney, if we, if we wanted to discuss something, we would have to waive the rule, or would that be chairman's discretion?
Based on the board's policy, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I believe that would be appropriate discussion during Commissioner time.
Okay, at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Appreciate the question. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Emily Mitchum.
Ms. Mitchum. Are you here, ma'am? Mr. County Administrator, let's move on to the next speaker. If she comes back, we'll go ahead and...
Sure thing. The next speaker, Reverend Don Tolliver.
Reverend Tolliver, how you doing, sir? Thank you for coming. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Reverend Don Tolliver, 302 Bevieuza Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I am deliciously happy to be here, Brother Chairman, to speak in front of you guys this morning. I am totally elated to be in front of you and presently seen and not viewed. God, thank you for this opportunity, and I thank the commission for a few moments of listening to my presentation. I have in front of me a presentation for Team Excellence International. It's a proposal called Neighbors Helping Neighbors. We did something with the city a couple of years ago called Communities Helping Communities in reaching out to different organizations and to be able to be the host of the neighborhoods as well as for the community. Our motto is neighbors helping neighbors, promoting awareness in neighborhoods with social and economic change for entitled communities. What we're doing is we're reaching out to individual communities with the assistance of other organizations and the assistance of other groups. What we're doing is having an ask of $50,000 continues the group that what we're working on. I have a presentation for you. We reached out to such organizations, such as Supervisors of Elections. We've also incorporated most of our work with State Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office. We work with the City and County Judges, Work Department, Agricultural Community Services, Fraternities, Sororities, Missed East Kitchens, Poor People Campaign, city and county commissioners, as well as a clerk of the court, Tax Collector's Office, the City of Tallahassee, Leon County Dissension Center, the sheriff and the police department, to help bring these initiatives out to the communities, as well as to engage, as well as to enhance what's currently going on. I don't know if you've ever heard the commercial of BASF. We don't make the goods, we just make it better. And that's what Team Excellence currently is doing. We've been in work for the last three years, for the last two years, we got an initiative from the city to work and do these services throughout. In addition to that, what we've also done is we've had an opportunity to engage with civil rights and public rights disparities, also food groups. We've also had an opportunity to do the second harvest, as well as farm share. We are in the community, the pulse of the community, making things happen throughout the entire community. And we also have initiatives, working with Dr. Blackburn as well. She didn't mention our group, but we've been with her with about 50% of the groups that she's done in the community, working with the Department of Health, as well as Leon County Health Department, working along beside them in the trenches in order to get information and work out, as well as doing promotional items, as well as making sure the information is done by the basic grassroots organizations. I have a presentation that I can pass to each and every one of you for consideration. I thank you, and God bless you.
Reverend Tolliver, always good to see you, sir. Thank you for being here. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
Next speaker, Ramirez Santiago Carlos.
Hello, sir. When you come up to the podium, would you please give your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Sure thing. May the greatest and peace of Christ be with you. Carlos Ramirez, Leon County. By now, you guys have heard that the earth and oceans are lacking oxygen due to the grave mismanagement by some corporations and governments. Believe me, nobody likes to have the idea, consider the idea of somebody choking them to death, neither does human traffickers like to, you know, be taken and be utilized by force to do whatever it is that they want to use them for. So our lungs need oxygen, yet some people in this world have come up with this idea that, hey, we need to gag them and put control over them, and just don't make them breathe too well. Guys, if we read Agenda 2021 and Agenda 2030 of the United Nations, we will find out that they have a plan, that they have been working on for quite some time, and yet we seem to, we just don't seem to want to research. Association of Doctors from around the world and lawyers have created something called StopWorldControl.com in order to, you know, pass the information around. Agenda 2030 seeks to depopulate 90% of the people in the world. How do we know this? All we got to do is just read their agenda. One of the, one of the guys in this, in this group say that they must, people must comply by registering in some way, eventually. But Revelation 1823 says that by sorceries all nations were deceived. That means, sorcery means pharmacia, which means drugs. All nations have been deceived right now by something that was created in the lab. Many labs actually said this last year, that this had strains of malaria, HIV, tuberculosis. But I'll tell you this, in Matthew 1028 it says, fear not those who can kill the body, rather fear him able to destroy soul and body in hell. Romans 10 says, if you believe in your heart that Jesus Christ is Lord and to fess with your mouth, you shall be saved. My friends, you are being complicit with the Agenda 2030 to kill many people around this world. Stop.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next speaker?
The next speaker, Daniel Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, thank you for coming, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Daniel Pierce. I live in Leon County. I have three kids that go to school here. I came to talk about the mask mandates that you guys are getting ready to do, and I'm just trying to get some understanding about what's going on. You know, it seems like the law keeps on changing and switching back and forth, and we don't know what to do, and then it's late-minute notifications, whether it come late-minute notification that the masks are mandated, or it's late-minute notification that you guys' board meeting that's supposed to be at 6 o'clock is now at 3 o'clock, and that the school board meeting that was supposed to be tonight is now canceled. Right? So it just seems like, it just seems like we're being put into a situation of uncertainty. There doesn't seem to be any firm leadership or consensus of what's going on, and I think that it has to do with not adhering to the law. I understand that many of you are under tremendous pressure, and, you know, what people do is prone to change depending on the pressure that they're under. And when civil servants and people in healthcare and, you know, just everyday people are having their livelihoods threatened if they make a stand on something that they believe in, you're faced with a very hard choice. And, and I think what people normally do in your circumstance before, you know, COVID and 2021, is they would revert back to the law. They would say, you know, this is what the law is reading, this is what we're supposed to do. But now it seems like people are subverting the law. They're finding different ways to get around what is constitutionally right, what is, what parents think is best for their children. And I would just hope that you guys take some caution. There's a lot of people out here, even people amongst you, that feel the same way that I do. I know that you do because I've talked to you, and it just seems like we're in a scary time. I would ask that you guys would adhere to the law, not teach our children that if you don't like the law, or that if the law doesn't comport to the way that you think or feel, that it's to be ignored or subverted. I think that it should be followed the way that it's written. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pierce. Let me just take a quick prerogative as the person chairing the meeting today. Just for folks that may be interested, the agenda has, number item 39, has two considerations that the county commissioner will be discussing. One is perhaps, possibly, consideration of a mask requirement for countywide buildings only. And then the other part of Agenda, item 39, talks about for indoor events managed by the Council of Culture and ARPS that are sponsored in part by the county, requiring masks for those types of events. So there, right now, on the agenda, there's nothing about any type of mask requirement countywide. I just want to point that out in case there are folks here that are here tonight believing that to be the case. Thank you all very, thank you very much. We'll go continue. Mr. County Administrator, please introduce the next speaker.
The next speaker, Dr. Rick Kuiper.
Thank you, doctor, for coming back. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Thanks for letting me talk again. Good evening. My name is Dr. Rick Kuiper. My address is 818 Shannon Street. I'm a digital forensic examiner and retired FBI agent. I gave my academic credentials last time, so I won't repeat it. I'd like to start out, if I could, by asking a question of all of you, and the question is this: Tonight, aside from simply referring to CDC guidelines, do any of you intend to present any scientific data to support the decisions you are considering regarding masks or vaccines? Okay. So it's kind of hard for us to believe that you're following the science if you're not bringing science to the table to discuss. So here's what you're doing. You're following CDC guidelines, all right? It'll define an ever-changing CDC guideline, so let's talk about that. I was with the FBI, as I mentioned last time, for 20 years. I rose to the rank of unit chief, which is a senior manager position in the FBI. And I need to tell you that all large federal agencies, at the top of those agencies, the ones who are crafting the narratives for the public, those people, I was going to say they're idiots, but that's pretty strong. They are disconnected, let's say, they are disconnected from the nuts... pretty strong. They are disconnected, let's say. They are disconnected from the nuts and bolts of the rest of the agency. CDC is no exception. And here's why I say this, because all of you have seen, have said that you would follow the CDC leaders and the CDC guidelines with respect to accepting these numbers about COVID and the deaths, for example, 640,000 deaths. But you ignore the actual CDC data that says 95% of all of those deaths have an average of four comorbidities, four things in addition to COVID that are actually killing them. Something else that you consider from the CDC upper echelon, CDC guidelines, and that is when the CDC says vaccines are safe and effective, you believe them. But you ignore the VAERS database data that says that COVID vaccines are more deadly than all the other vaccines combined for the history of vaccines. That's a fact. That's the science. That's, that's what you have to look at. And third, you accept the CDC guidelines when it comes to masks, saying that masks are effective against influenza virus. But you ignore the CDC's own study that looked at 14 randomized controlled trials that showed that masks are ineffective against influenza-type viruses. So with all due respect, commissioners, it doesn't seem that you care about science. It seems that you only care about compliance. Now you're back.
Thank you, Dr. Kuiper. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next speaker?
The next speaker, Elizabeth David.
Ms. Davidson, thank, out here, Ms. Davidson, thank you very much for being here. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Elizabeth David Sun, 4833 Fred George Road. And I do understand how you want to plant that seed. And I am here to ask questions. Last time we were here, Ms. Blackburn said they investigated over 40,000 cases. What was the criteria to count those cases as a COVID death? Does it mean at the time of death, there was a COVID positive diagnosis? There was clearly an alternate death cause, and they were COVID positive? Did you still list it as a COVID death? And Mr. Long, sir, you are a hypocrite. You made a policy that if a county employee gets into a vehicle-
Ms. Davidson, please keep this, please keep this remainder of the issue. You will not, you will not attack individuals from that podium, ma'am.
Maskless, you enter a county vehicle and you carpool with somebody else? Why were you seen without a mask on? In regards to Alachua County's mask mandate, that was referenced last week, were you aware that their end goal had to be 100% vaccine compliance before they take their mask off? In the Gainesville Sun, it was issued an addendum adding, Alachua County does not have the legal authority to declare such a local emergency, and it is invalid as a matter of law. What mask edicts do you have for your measurements for visitors, evacuees, refugees, any of that? Commissioner, it's clearly against the law. You second motions to still consider a mask mandate when it's against the law. The statements you make about masking or not masking skewing everything, you are wrong. Death numbers being confused with positivity numbers, Americans being pitted against each other, hearing impaired, mentally challenged, and the homeless all being isolated, along with the commissioners and county administrators acting as dictators. This has skewed everything. This has. Stop trying to lead with an iron fist. You have zero empathy for any of those who do not fit in your little myopic bubble. If businesses want to mandate a mask, they can mandate it. If you walk in there without a mask, there is something in the law that says no trespassing. Call the law and have them removed. You do not need to do a mask mandate. I understand this meeting was not officially called for masking or not masking, but as of last week, yes, it was, and that's why we are here.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next speaker?
The final speaker on non-agenda items, Pete Tyson.
Mr. Tyson, thank you for coming, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Pete Tyson. I live at 9238 White Blossom Way, Tallahassee, Florida. I wanted to say, first of all, I don't know any of you, and you folks don't know me. I believe that most of you, if not all of you, are trying to do the right thing. I do believe that. My concern is that if you were to look at a mask mandate and consider it, I think it's the proverbial, the proverbial camel's nose under the tent. And my concern is, have you really thought this all the way through? Have you thought this all the way in the sense of what really could become of something like that long term? First, you know, it starts as a mask mandate. Then it's a mandatory vaccine. Then it's closing of businesses. Then it's a lockdown. And you might be saying, well, Pete, we're not even talking about that today. Why are you bringing that up? The reason I'm bringing it up, whether you know or don't realize, whether you know or don't know, is this is a massive problem in Australia right now. Have y'all, have y'all read about what's going on in Australia? Did you realize in Australia, you can source this, or I can give you all the sources. Did you know that they're putting up temporary border walls to separate districts? It would be like us putting up a barrier wall on Tennessee Street or Monroe Street, and people are forced to stay behind that wall. I don't know if you realize this. This is, this is the law of Australia. You cannot cross the wall, or you will be arrested. Okay? So a few weeks ago, it was Father's Day in Australia, and all the people had said they had enough. So they gathered at the wall, and they were trying to see their family members. I wish I had more time because I could tell you stories, true stories about what happened in East Berlin in the 1960s. But the area of this is called the Great Wall of Coolangata. That's C-O-O-L-A-N-G-A-T-T-A, if you'd like to Google it. You can find the barriers set up in the street where the family members cannot cross it to see there are other family members. It is a wall that's come down, which is what happened in East Berlin in 61. When the wall came down, there were family members separated for 28 years. So you might be thinking that this is not a possibility. But I'm saying this can be the initial steps of something much bigger to come from it. And so I'm just asking you to consider this, okay? Over in this area in Australia, there have been 16 COVID deaths out of 48,000. So tens of millions of people's lives have been changed in this area of Australia due to the fact of some deaths, which I'm not minimizing at all. The other issue is, in both states, they have lost 1,600 peoples, both states in Australia, 1,600 people due to suicide. Please consider it.
Mr. Tyson, thank you very much for coming. Mr. County Administrator, that concludes the number of public speakers for non-agenda items, correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, we are now at general business. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this next item, Commissioners, seeks your acceptance of the 2021 Leon County Annual Report. As you know, Commissioners, this is an item that I bring to you each time this year as required by Florida statutes. But this, Commissioners, as I, as I, as I have said, is my favorite state mandate that I am very proud to fulfill each year on behalf of the dedicated men and women of Leon County Government. Before you, Commissioners, I've distributed the 2021 Annual Report, no reading ahead, Mr. Chairman, which demonstrates to you the, the progress that we've made in 2021 amidst seemingly endless challenges, how we answered these challenges head-on, and throughout it all delivered on our ambitious targets and bold goals for the organization and the community. As we've done in the past, Commissioners, we've produced a short video to promote the annual report and to share our story with as many as the citizens we serve as possible. This is important, Commissioners, because we are only able to achieve the results that you'll find in this report with the active involvement, input and support of our citizens. Following the video, I'll present a few slides, Commissioners, which delve a little deeper into the significant accomplishments and milestones we've achieved together over the last year. And Commissioners, I know that what you'll see in the video, the presentation, the annual report will make you as proud as I am to be a part of this team at Leon County. And with that, Matt, could you please cue the video?
In 2021, Leon County continued to make great progress and serve our citizens amidst seemingly endless challenges. While Delta variant cases surged, we led efforts to vaccinate and protect our most vulnerable and hardest-to-reach communities. While nationwide evictions and business closures soared, we provided tens of millions in direct assistance to households, businesses, and nonprofit partners. When well-paying jobs were needed most, we recruited Amazon to create the largest private sector job opportunity in our history. And we did this and so much more, never losing focus of our ambitious vision and bold goals for the organization and the community. The 2021 Annual Report reflects our organization-wide response to the pandemic, the uninterrupted provision of essential services, and the adaptation, innovation, and unrelenting commitment of our county employees over the past year. It also demonstrates the importance of having a clear vision and a culture built upon our core values and practices. Amid our response effort to the pandemic, our dedicated employees continue to set the standard each day in EMS, public works and parks, libraries, and so many other essential services. We also became the nation's first local government to require vaccines to protect our employees and ensure our operational readiness to serve the community. While addressing the urgent needs of this time, we remain committed to executing our long-term strategy by securing Amazon. This game-changing project will bring more than 1,000 full-time jobs to our community and lead to a $100 million a year local economic impact. And the work on long-term transformational projects continued in 2021, like the replacement of hundreds of septic tanks in the South Side, and the opening and improving of green spaces for all to enjoy. We continued to keep our community engaged with initiatives like our annual day of service honoring the 20th anniversary of September 11, and through our Created Equal program on Florida Emancipation Day focused on race, equity, and history. With live music and events safely returning, we remain committed to being one of the South's best destinations for residents and visitors alike. We also sprinted into 2021 with state-of-the-art improvements to the Appalachia Regional Park, making it a world-class destination for the NCAA Cross-Country National Championship and other premier events. However, with vaccinations stagnating and the Delta variant surging, 2021 demanded the best of our organization. Now activated for more than 19 straight months, our teams continued to lead the COVID-19 response by coordinating one of the state's first and largest vaccination campaigns with a focus on reaching minority communities. We also continued distributing millions of PPE to frontline healthcare workers, planning for hospital surges, and providing more than a half a million masks through our county libraries. Leon County was recognized as the number-one county in Florida at distributing emergency relief during the pandemic. The county leveraged more than $138 million in federal funding to quickly address the community's most urgent needs, such as direct assistance to more than 8,000 households and nearly 1,000 businesses, funding more than 180 nonprofits, distributing 4.1 million meals to the food insecure, investing $6.7 million to increase contact tracing and testing, and so much more, all while Leon County EMS responded to more than 13,000 urgent COVID-19 calls. 2021 has been both a proud and humbling year to be a county employee, with our teams earning dozens of state and national awards for best practices and efficiency in public service. As we've done throughout the crisis, Leon County will remain committed to listening to the people we serve, addressing the challenges we face together, and striving every day to be a healthy, safe community where people thrive. Please learn more about all of Leon County's efforts this year on behalf of and alongside our community in the 2021 Annual Report.
Commissioners, while that video is a tough act to follow, as I mentioned to you, I've got just a quick presentation that'll hit on just a few highlights and go into a little deeper detail. Again, it's a little tough for us to hit the highlights when you consider all of the things that we do, Commissioners, in Leon County. And again, but I do this because, of course, our annual report is about 80 pages. But first, Commissioners, at the outset here, let me just say that none of what you'll see or hear or read in the annual report would have been possible without the clear and consistent leadership and direction that we received from the board. I can't stress that enough, Commissioners. On behalf of the county employees, as I say publicly at each time this year, I want to thank you, Commissioners, for believing in this organization. I want to thank you for believing in Leon County employees. It's so important. And speaking of our team, Commissioners, let me also say at the start here that I can't say enough about the commitment and dedication of our talented team who continue to step up and produce big results for the community and for the citizens we serve. Commissioners, I also need to acknowledge our citizens again and so many community partners, because we can't do any of what we do alone. So with that, Commissioners, just a few slides. First, I want to talk a little bit about, and as you all very well know, and it's been captured throughout this report, the pandemic continued in 2001 to present unprecedented challenges. And of course, it required an unprecedented response from the county. And that's exactly what we did. I think it's safe to say that every service, every program, every employee in the county was impacted by the challenge and engaged in some way in the response, which of course continues. So throughout the annual report, you'll see this organization-wide effort that has taken place in response to the, to the pandemic. You'll see how we managed the uninterrupted provision of daily essential services throughout, and again, the adaptation and innovation and unrelenting commitment of so many county employees. But first, a couple of highlights from our COVID-19 response in 2020. Commissioners, as you've heard us say now many times, this has been the longest and most extensive, extensive emergency activation in our county's history. As of today, we've been activated for 546 days and through two severe weather events. While it's impossible to list all of the efforts in 2021 to mitigate the spread of the virus, Commissioners, some of the very high-level efforts include, and they're listed on, on this slide, launching our online VaxMap, which has been viewed more than 25,000 times, coordinating with our local healthcare partners to implement the COVID-19 vaccine rollout and vaccinated, and vaccinate over 123,000 citizens, partnering with the Vaccination Task Force to address vaccine hesitancy by engaging 27,000 households and vaccinating nearly 5,000 people in underserved communities, preparing hospital surge plans in coordination with our healthcare partners, distributing over 1.7 million pieces of PPE, and coordinating critical health, public health messaging that's been seen, heard, or read over 30 million times, Commissioners, in 2021. Of course, as I mentioned, Commissioners, you'll see our COVID response efforts reflected in virtually everything we did in '21. Drilling down here a little, one of the most significant efforts, of course, has been our implementation of Leon County Cares. Commissioners, the successful $138 million Leon County Cares program was a massive undertaking. It required scores of employees and dozens of community partners and industry-leading technology and expert outside guidance and consulting and, and as well as leveraging significant state and local resources. On the screen, Commissioners, you can see the highlights summarizing the positive impact of Leon County Cares throughout the community, to include providing critical financial support again to over 8,000 household, households, support to over 930 small businesses, supporting 120 local nonprofits, investing $6.2 million in homeless shelters, providing over 4.1 million meals, expanding capacity of Big Ben 211 to deal with mental health crises, providing 400 children with, of essential workers with, with no-cost daycare. As you'll see on the bottom of the slide, Commissioners, federal funds were also deployed to significantly expand and strengthen our public health operations in '21, including the allocation of 6.7 million in support of hiring 93 additional public health personnel, increasing the community-wide testing rate to approximately 2,000 tests a day, about twice the state-recommended average. And you'll, you'll recall, Commissioners, that again, that we launched our largest public information campaign in the county's history to inform and educate our community about public health guidance and vaccination. Commissioner, I couldn't be prouder about these efforts, about the planning and execution and the cooperation of our staff and our partners throughout this in 2021. And of course, you'll see our COVID response efforts and accomplishments reflected throughout the report. But Commissioners, notwithstanding the tremendous effort and the resources dedicated to our COVID response in 2021- and the resources dedicated to our COVID response in 2021, again, we also remain very focused on the execution of our county's strategic priorities this year. Because we align our annual report with our five strategic plan priorities, Commissioners, that's the way we've categorized the annual report as well. And you'll see the progress that we've made on 104 strategic initiatives, 16 targets, four bold goals, and how they're all aligned with our four strategic priority areas. And you'll see the execution of this plan continues to yield exceptional results, Commissioners. Before I get into those four strategic plan priorities, let me just hit quickly on a few highlights on the county's overall fiscal stewardship, which of course encompasses all of those categories and is critical to all of the different things that we do. First, Commissioners, you'll see on the screen that in '21, we balanced the county budget with no change for the 10th year in a row in either the property tax mileage rate or the EMS-MSTU mileage rate, and in fact, no property tax rate increases or fee increases whatsoever. This was achieved due to the key role our employees play, Commissioners, in our efficiency and innovation efforts. This year alone, another $13.3 million in cost savings identified by staff through those efforts. In 2021, Commissioners, the county was able to leverage $202 million in grant funding. That's a leverage ratio of 13.1, which is exceptional. As part of this year's budget process, Commissioners, you provided us the guidance to establish a living wage of $14 an hour for all county employees. And finally, as a result of our sound fiscal priorities and long-range planning, Commissioners, the county has achieved an upgraded AA+ bond rating from Fitch Ratings. Commissioners, I like to remind people all the time that those are impressive metrics, but it's much more telling when you consider the fact that we do this year in and year out with more property off the tax rolls than any other county. And as important as these efficiency metrics are, Commissioners, what we do at the county is much more than just being efficient. It's about getting results with the resources that we have. So in the following slides, I'd like to provide just a few examples from the report which fall into the categories of our four strategic priorities. And we'll start, Commissioners, first with the economy. The screen above here again reflects the section of the report in front of you on the economy. While the pandemic again presented financial challenges, the county responded in some very big ways. First, Commissioners, as you saw there in the video, through the direct result of the county's efforts, we landed Amazon. This project will be the largest private sector job creation in Tallahassee's history, again generating more than 1,000 jobs and $200 million in capital investment. Actually, when you include the construction jobs, it's 2,400 jobs. On top of this, Commissioners, this project has an estimated economic impact that'll be over $100 million annually. And due to the good work of OEV and your approval, Commissioners, through the IA, this deal was sealed with economic development incentives that were put in place to make big goals like this happen and make them a reality. As noted, Commissioners, in our Leon Cares overview, we distributed $19.2 million, $19.2 million in assistance to over 930 small businesses impacted by COVID-19 to support and save 6,600 jobs. However, it's also worth noting that 75% of these funds were awarded to very small businesses with fewer than 10 employees. Additionally, $7.8 million, Commissioners, were awarded to local MWSBEs. This year, Commissioners, we partnered with the Appalachian Regional Planning Council and the Federal Credit Union to create two new microloan programs. Through these programs, both city and county have invested over $4 million this year to support women and minority businesses. Finally, Commissioners, we hosted 12 championship sporting events. These events helped support the recovery of our tourism economy, which is a real focus for us after this pandemic, and which totaled over $100 million in economic impact for us in 2021. This strategic focus is evidenced on tonight's agenda, Commissioners. In just a few moments, we'll be bringing you an item that seeks your approval to compete in the cross-country world championships, Commissioners, so that good work continues. And with all those efforts and many more, we intend to rebound economically from the pandemic and be well-positioned, Commissioners, to continue to grow and diversify our economy. And the strategic priority of the environment before you hear, Commissioners, and I'll start picking up steam here and just again hit some of the highlights. This has been a busy year in the area of the environment. We launched the county's Sustainabiz program to recognize local sustainable businesses that have integrated sustainability into their business practices. We hosted the 2001 Sustainability Community Summit, which was the most engaged summit to date with over 400 virtual and in-person attendees. To enhance our water quality, Commissioners, we adopted the fertilizer ordinance and launched the fertilizer timeout. You see that icon up there? It's really catching on. It comes right out of our CMR shop. And you'll see that a lot, but it's the Timeout Rain Delay Campaign, Commissioners, which is a direct result of your policy action. We also continue to make significant progress on our bold goal to improve, or rather, to remove 500 septic tanks over five years from the Wacola Springs basin. So far, we've completed 186 septic tank replacements with an additional 424 planned or in progress. And each of these continued to leverage county funds dollar-for-dollar, Commissioners, with state funding. Finally, we completed several significant drainage infrastructure improvements to alleviate flooding and improve water quality at nearby lakes and streams. These are located on Meridian Road and Raymond Tucker Golden Pheasant and Wynwood Hills areas, Commissioners. Turning to quality of life, Commissioners, we've made much progress in 2021, improving the lives of people in our community in so many ways. Again, through Leon Cares, the county will provide over $138 million to address food insecurity, rent and utility assistance, small business assistance, increased contact tracing and testing, as well as support for human services, childcare, mental health, and many other items in 2021. Leon County EMS achieved a cardiac survival rate above the national average while responding to a record number of calls. In '21, Commissioners, Leon County EMS responded to 45,000 calls for service, of which more than 13, again, were urgent COVID-related calls. Here's another great one, Commissioners. We were recognized, again, and you saw this in the video, as well as the top-performing local government in the state for efficiency in distributing our coronavirus relief funds to support local housing needs. The two and three counties, to give you an example, Commissioners, were Miami-Dade and Hillsborough County, which are huge counties with tons of capacity to stand up programs like this. We also developed and launched a plan to implement our essential libraries initiative, Commissioners, a re-envisioning of the public library to continue to grow and evolve to meet the changing needs of our community. And finally, Commissioners, we partnered with KCCI, the Night Creative Communities Initiative, to generate more public art in spaces through Art in the Box, a community-wide initiative to transform utility boxes with wraps showcasing the work of local artists. And I'm sure you've seen those all around town. And again, Commissioners, that just begins to cover the progress we made in this broad category. Finally, Commissioners, in the strategic priority of governance, we continued our organization-wide effort to set the standard in public service. This year, we grew our county's social media reach to more than 60,000 followers across all platforms. We launched text-to-911 systems to expand accessibility to emergency services by allowing citizens who are unable to make calls to send a text message directly to a 911 dispatcher. We achieved our goal to train 100% of employees in diversity and domestic violence, sexual violence, and stalking in the workplace. We also hosted the Six Annual Created Equal Event to commemorate Emancipation Day in Florida on May 20th. This year, the Created Equal Program event was recognized by the National Association of Counties as the most innovative communications and public information program among all counties nationwide. And in 2021, Commissioners, we were once again recognized for best practices in county government with just a few of those recognitions represented there on the slide. Phew, Commissioners, that's a lot. And as I bring it in for landing, I just wanted, as I mentioned earlier, Commissioners, to say that, of course, this just scratches the surface of the accomplishments that we've made together on behalf of and alongside our citizens over the past year. This demonstrates perhaps more than any other year, the dedication, the commitment, and the ability to adapt of our county employees. I say this all the time, but ours is as talented and hard-working a workforce as you will find in any organization. While we continue to face major challenges, I could not be more confident, Commissioners, in the team that we have in place at Leon County to continue to rise to the challenge. A very special thank you, Commissioners, to Chastity Osteen and the county attorney's office, who are a critical, critical part of our team. And Chastity, I just wanted to say a special thank you to you and your team at this time. And finally, thanks to the board again, Commissioners. You continue to provide, again, leadership to us during these unprecedented times, and it was absolutely essential to everything that you heard me talk about today and everything we'll be able to accomplish as an organization. Again, just a reminder that the annual report, as well as the video, are available on our website, and we will share it far and wide. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your indulgence. That concludes my report, and oh yes, I'm recommending option one.
Mr. County Administrator, thank you very much. Outstanding work. I'm going to go ahead. There's a bunch of people here that would like to speak. I'll have Vice Chair Proctor first, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Dozier, if she'd like to speak, and then I'll wrap it up along with anyone else that likes to join us. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. When I was in school, after listening to Vince's compelling report, Commissioner Cummings, when I was in school, we were told that if you can't dazzle them with brilliance, then snow them with bullshit. And Vince, you've done a great job today of dazzling us with brilliance. And the service delivery of our leadership team speaks for itself. It's been outstanding and excellent. What this report does not contextualize is that much of the service delivery is outside the norm that typically we have never been in, in the crisis climate of a pandemic. And I think that we have to add a little greater velocity to what we were managed to do in the moment of a crisis of a pandemic. So Vince, to you and your staff, I say congratulations, county attorney. Your labor has been an extraordinary time, which this community, our state, nation, has never before seen. I listened carefully, and I think that it was not an omission because I did see it in the book captured. But our work in establishing the Children's Services Council is also there, but I was listening verbally, and I missed it if you mentioned it. But I want to give a shout out to the work that our staff has done and the money that we have given to loan to get them started. The Children's Services Council, a very efficient piece of work that Vince did not vocalize, but which is captured here. Commissioners, we did receive a national award, and I, not reward, but award, attended the National Association of Counties back in August. And I promise, the next time, I'll remember to bring it. But our county received a national award, and I was on stage with six or seven other counties across the nation for the category I can't even remember. But it was a huge auditorium, and Leon County was the first county call for an award that day. So all of that endures to the leadership of our commission executed by our staff. May I also, Vince, you said finally about seven times, and I said, "Vince, you ready to be a Baptist preacher?" Because he hit the final, "finally." And you hit it, you know, so there may be a robe that'll fit you, Vince, in the Baptist tradition. We, in the legislative category, we have done quite well last year in the sewer, securing of sewer dollars specifically for Woodville. And I think that, given the extraordinary amount of money that came across the street in our legislature and extra funding that came from Washington, billions of dollars over and beyond the expectation of the budget, we did not get a fair share. And when I look at the legislative page for all the money that we sit across the street in front of, I am convinced that redlining is occurring by the Florida Legislature against this community. And it saddens me that the politics of red versus blue is being played out. And there's just no way that the extraordinary amounts of money that was beyond our budget and we're not bringing a report card home reflected to our needs. And I heard Vince say that no other county in the state has as much property off of its tax rolls. And certainly, no other county in Florida has the heart of its community off the tax rolls as we have with state presence, university presence, our presence, city. All of our downtown property is not even available to us to do avalorium receipts on dollars. But we have to redouble and maybe even lawyer up and file a lawsuit because we are not getting pro-rata share of money across the street commensurate to the needs of our community and our servicing for our area. There's $3.5 trillion lined up, hopefully a vote can secure, that the flesh and blood human services money, Vince, is coming down. And on $3.5 trillion, well, my calculator don't work up that far. But I want some. I want some of it. We want some. We deserve some. So out of all that you've done, you know, you give people an inch, they want a mile. I want some of that money. And I'm asking us to gear up and if we need, because we're never going to see in our lifetime that kind of money made available. And I think that what we've experienced before, Mr. Chairman, was just a warm-up for what's really about to come down. And we gotta be ready. It's like pecans falling out the tree. You gotta be there to pick them up while they, you know, get your bucket together. And then my first finally, Mr. Chairman, and my last finally, is that I'm so respectful that the margins have erred in the work that we do, that there has been no allegations of public misconduct on the parts of Commissioners, on the parts of our staff, no alluding to, no suggestions of. And when you have, in the climate that we've existed over the past year, that our government has had a pristine record, not only competence, but character, that counts too. And that's not in the book. There's no category for that. But credibility matters. And I want to salute our staff and the commission as we represent the people that we have been able to carry and conduct ourselves for another year free of any allegations of such misconduct. Those things being said, Mr. Chairman, I have a lot listed, but I'll yield the floor in thanking our staff also for its 911 information. And then my last finally, there is a vacancy at our public health and the next director of the Leon County Health Department. In this pivotal moment, the services that we've initiated, we need a person who, on day one in this crisis, can lead internally and can communicate externally with the various agencies. And it's my hope, Vince, that you're keeping close monitoring on the successor of Claudia Blackburn. We need a winner, and it's very important, all the stakes and dynamics of now. Those things being said, thank you. Congratulations for your leadership and sharing with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. I've got Commissioner Jackson next, and then Commissioner Welch. Mr. Jackson.
Well, that's a hard act to follow. I feel like you should drop a mic or something at this point. Commissioner Proctor, I won't repeat everything that you said, but again, Mr. Administrator and all the county staff, unbelievable work in the midst of... Administrator, and all the county staff, unbelievable work in the midst of unbelievable times. Kerry Post, didn't I say Kerry? Kerry? Kerry Post, great thanks to you for the Office of Economic Vitality, helping us to bring some of these funds and income to our county at a time that's extremely difficult to recruit and have that sort of, those sort of activities in a safe atmosphere. So shout out to you. What is really amazing to me is, is landing the plane with Amazon, and the, kind of the, the deal maker that that will be for our community. 3,600 jobs for people to go to work to every single day, $451 million worth of local impact, economic impact here in Leon County. And we could go on and on. The CARES Act that supported mom and pop and neighborhood operations and businesses right here in Leon County to the tune of $18 million for over 900 local Leon County businesses, at a time when I'm sure they woke up and looked in the mirror on certain days and were wondering how they would make it through those tough times. And not everyone made it through, but I do, I do applaud our efforts at trying to get that money out and into hands. And us being the number one county in the state for distributing 138 million to taxpayers when they needed it most, there are still counties that have not depleted and, and sent all of their funds out to local businesses, or even made decisions on how that money would be spent. At a time when people needed it most, we responded swiftly, I think justifiably, and to the people that needed it the most. And that's super important to me, in particular, folks in all over Leon County that may be jobless now will have some opportunities to advance. So again, great job, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. I've got Commissioner Welch, and then Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, I just wanna echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I cannot be nearly as eloquent as Commissioner Proctor, the dean, I guess, of the county commission with his excellent speaking skills, but ultimately, you know, as a new guy on the commission and only being around for 10 months, I can confidently say that the entire organization, up and down, is very impressive. And I think that's a testament to the leadership at the top, Vince and Allen and Chastity. Every department is, is full of very capable, very smart people, and I think the outcomes that you just spoke to really reflect that in our community. You know, and as a, again, as a, as a new guy, a new person, it is refreshing and impressive to see such a well-run organization. I think that, in light of what has happened, to your point, Commissioner Jacks, or Commissioner Proctor, over the past decade in our local government, you don't see Leon County in a negative light, really. And I think that's impressive, the ship is really steady, and I think that's a credit to, to the leadership. And I just wanna thank all of the folks that I've had the opportunity to interact with in the county, the staff, whether it's Public Works, or, or Tourist Development, O E V, Blueprint, across the board, it really, I want to assure all of my constituents and the folks out there listening that the county is a very well-run organization. It really, really is, and I have the full faith in its leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to briefly, Mr. Chair, just echo the sentiments of everybody, um, my fellow commissioners. I couldn't sit here, and I also recognize the good work that the county employees have done over this last year under the leadership of our county administrator, Vincent Long. This is a beautiful annual report, but I am also excited, just like my fellow commissioner Jackson, about the economic development that this staff has engineered, and hopefully we will be sending influx of over 1,000 to 1,500 jobs, and we're talking about the influx of millions of dollars that will assist our economy and that will certainly uplift the citizens in, in Leon County. I mean, a tremendous, tremendous effort on the part of our county administrator and his staff. I also just want to just stress how the county has worked in the face of this pandemic, and has worked to address the ills of all the citizens. We've, through the county administrator, have tried to address those individuals that are reluctant to receive the vaccine. And not only talking, but we've devoted millions of dollars to try to take the message to all communities. And we recognize that it is a personal decision, but we've tried to make that information available, and not only the information, but the vaccines available as well. So I think the county administrator and his staff, Ms. Blackburn and the Health Department have just done a tremendous job to let the citizens of Leon County know that they are cared about. And I believe that the citizens recognize that all of us here on the commission care about the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens. We might not always make decisions that everybody will agree with, but I think you can agree that we certainly have the concern in the health and safety of all citizens from a holistic standpoint at the top of the list. This county annual report, the summary of it is just, is just beautiful. And I just want you to know, in attending Florida Association of County conferences and subcommittee meetings, our staff here at Leon County is always very well thought of, very well admired, along with our county attorney, Chastity Osteen, and there's a segment in here that relates to her office as well. So I just, Mr. Chairman, just wanna just commend every segment of the staff, and I echo Commissioner Proctor's sentiment as well. And I believe going forward, we have a great, great outlook for Leon County under our current administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I've got Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Dozier, if she'd like to say any remarks. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vincent, very good job this year by you and staff. We can take, we can trace our successes down to the Public Works, Juritorial Staff, our belligerent sheriffs, the people who won't be much mentioned up here but do the hard work that make this county look good. We don't take the credit for Leon County being what it is, we give all the credit to those folks. One of, one of the best things I like about our leader, Vince Long, is when I sit with him in the briefing and we talk about these things in the annual report, he's quick to share that spotlight, not even share that spotlight, but to give the spotlight to the people who do the work out there. There are minds up here who create strategic plans, and who create agendas, and who create thoughts, but those agendas, strategic plans, and thoughts never become reality without the hands to actually do the work. And so I'm gonna take a slightly different angle here in saying that we appreciate each and every one of the people who do the work in Leon County for being able to have an annual report such as the one that we're presenting today. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. And now I'm gonna take a coach's angle and tell you, next year, I fully expect for us to raise the bar and be better than this year. Not to say that this year was bad, this year was absolutely incredible with the challenges that we met as a government, but never be content, never be okay with what you did last year. Mr. County Administrator, like I said, I expect us to raise the bar, I expect us to be bigger and better next year, get more awards, and get more notoriety, and lead like we've led in years prior. Whether it comes with criticism, or it comes with praise, I expect us to lean and be the best in model government, not only in the state of Florida, but in these United States. With that, Mr. Chair, I make a motion for staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Motion's been made to accept the staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor. Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion, Commissioner Dozier, do you have any comments, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go quick and not repeat what I've already heard, a lot of great comments from my colleagues. And although I wasn't able to see the entire video, I heard it, and it sounded great, I look forward to watching it. I think it's very important, and I'm glad that some of you have recognized that our county administrator does a fantastic job, that he has an incredible and very large team behind him to carry out all of the different policies, whether it's initiatives by the board or by staff. And I am very proud of the fact that the county has led, and continued, for years, and continues to lead on really innovative ideas that are picked up by other counties. This comes from our county attorney's office, as well as our county administrator and our staff, and it's recognized nationally and across the state. I think in addition to that, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I also want to recognize the number of things in the report that come from board initiatives. We may look at an agenda item that is very well done, robust research from staff, and then one of the seven or multiple of us will tweak it a little bit, or ask a question and add to that. The rainy day campaign to not use fertilizer on rainy days is one of those things that we weren't quite sure if it would work, and the public communication, the logo, and everything has really started to take off, as you said, Mr. County Administrator. So I know that was on our consent agenda, so just one example like that. I appreciate how you all on the staff side take those ideas, and sometimes tell us they might not work, but more often than not, you make them work. So this is a great partnership. And lastly, Mr. Chair, I was gonna bring this up later in the meeting when we had our last agenda item, but I think I'm gonna recognize it now, because the county administrator included in the report the vaccine mandate. And I want to say that we've received a number of emails about this, some comments, a lot of support, some asking if the board might have a different opinion than the county administrator. And for me personally, I want to say that I 100% support this initiative from our county administrator, it is his decision. I am proud that we were the first county to initiate a vaccine mandate, I think it is the right decision. Obviously, we've seen lots of businesses, and now the White House mandated it. And in the reporting and the statement that many people have seen from yesterday, I think we are on sperm- leave little ground. And I wondered if it would be appropriate to take a vote in support, even though this is a county administrator decision. I would love to take a vote in support of his decision to really recognize that publicly, that this was the right direction to go. So I, if there was any concerns about that from the county administrator or county attorney, please let me know, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to have some statement of support, a resolution from this board in support of the vaccine mandate for county employees.
Commissioner Dozier, I appreciate your comments, but there is a motion on the floor already that's been seconded?
Oh, forgive me, Mr. Chair, it's a little different being out of the room.
Oh, no, believe me, I understand.
I'll let that go, we can come back to it in, in a moment. I'd appreciate it, that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. I'll try to make my comments brief, because I agree with, you know, a lot of what everyone else has already said. I think some of you that have been around for a little bit have heard me say this before. In many years ago, I used to develop public policy for a living, mainly for state and local governments. And so I've traveled, and I've seen a lot of what other governments are doing. Some are doing a great job, some a little bit less so, but having been here and lived here, and now have been, haven't been a county commissioner for three years, I can tell you, this is as good a government as I have ever seen. It really is tremendous. If you live here, whether you're aware of Leon County government or not, you're benefiting from the tremendous work that about 1,000 employees who work, who are dedicated to serving this community are doing every day for us. So thank you to the county administrator, thank you to the 1,000 employees out there that, you know, I was gonna rattle off some departments, and then I realized that would be a fool's errand to try to start. You know, if you look at the annual report, there's a, there's an org chart here, and a small fraction is represented here, but you have those 1,000 employees out of 300,000 people who live here, that work, that, that make this county better. So I'm very proud to be part of your team, Leon County staff, proud to be part of this work, this partnership between the, the board and the county administrator and all of his employees. You all make this entire community proud to be living in Leon County. Thank you, thank you. And with that, we'll move on. Yes, Commissioner Maddox.
One last thing, I think we, every year we come up here, we talk about how good we are, and the staff is, and county administrator, but I think, you know, and I learned this a little bit through some work, but I think we couldn't be what we are without our constituents, our citizens in Leon County, giving us the opportunity to serve them the way we serve them. The calls that you guys make, the letters that you send in to tell us how great staff is, the, even, even some of the times when you come up here and you criticize some of the things that we do, it makes us think, it makes us a better government. And so whether you agree or disagree, I want to encourage every single citizen in Leon County, all 299,000 of you, if you have something to say to this government, send an email, make a phone call, come see us, come talk to us. Because oftentimes, that, those are the things, those are the things that make us the model government that we are. And so I didn't want to let this opportunity pass, Mr. Chair, without also giving some of the credit back to the citizens who reside here in Leon County, who, again, help us be the great county that we are. Thank you, Mr.
Well said, Commissioner Maddox. And with that, we'll move on to the vote. Vote made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by, who made the second? Commissioner Jackson? Oh, Vice Chair Proctor, my apologies, sir. All in favor of the motion to accept the annual report? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am?
I was in support.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Mr. County Administrator, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, we referenced this item earlier, exciting item. Let me just tell you just a little bit more about him, about this item 33. It seeks board's authorization to submit a formal bid to host the 2026 World Athletics Cross Country Championships at A R P, and the approval of a budget amendment, the amount of $250,000 for the required performance deposit. The World Cross Country Championship Races, Commissioners, is the most prestigious cross-country event in the world, featuring professional and amateur athletes from over 60 countries. The event would showcase the Leon County community and the cross-country course in the A R P to international travelers and audiences, while also positioning the A R P to serve as the potential training facility ahead of the 2028 Summer Olympics in Los Angeles. So we've come a long way, Commissioners, and, and, and though this event was, was last held in the United States in 1992, Leon County has pre-qualified to submit a bid for the 2026 Championship Races, which will be awarded this December. If awarded, Commissioners, the $250,000 performance deposit is required in the 2022 budget, and there will be adequate funds available through the Division of Tourism Fund Balance. Prospective host communities, Commissioners, as we described in the item, must also guarantee a minimum commitment of $1.75 million. This includes the deposit toward the formation and execution of the event. It's anticipated, Commissioners, that the event expenses will be offset through the support of state and national partner organizations, corporate sponsorships, and other revenue opportunities, and up to an additional $250,000 is what we're recommending in tourism funds. Should the county be awarded the 26 World Cross Country Championships, a budget discussion item, Commissioners will come back to you in the budget process, and you'll have ample time and information to consider at that time. I should also note, Commissioners, that the T D C have unanimously recommended their support to submit the bid in pursuit of this international event. The county is in a position to compete for the World Cross Country Championships. Again, Commissioners, thanks to, to your vision and commitment and resources to build a world-class destination here, and, and as several Commissioners experienced yesterday at the And as several Commissioners experienced yesterday at the unveiling of some of the first amenities constructed, the multipurpose building, the stage, the finish line, it's all very exciting. And again, great thanks to our staff who have planned and facilitated and managed the caliber of championships races that we've had over 100 meets to date, some of which have been years in the making. And so Commissioners, before we get into the discussion on this item, I've asked Carrie Post, who, like I said yesterday, has guaranteed Commissioner Proctor that we will land this event. Guaranteed. And so I've asked Carrie to come up and give the board a quick overview of the robust fall cross-country schedule, which begins later this week. Carrie, floor is yours. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Chairman, and County Commissioners. I am so happy and proud, I mean, you've got the schedule here, to announce this fall cross-country season will be the biggest and most prestigious cross-country season we have held with seven national, state, and regional cross-country championship events. These events will bring more than 35,000 visitors and more than $10 million in direct spending to our community this fall. The cross-country program out at Appalachian Regional Park has been steadily building over the last 10 years, and it really has accelerated over the last five years with this board's leadership and the amazing sports team of Amanda Heidecker and Joe Petrowski and the entire tourism team, the incredible county park staff who truly care for their course like they're groundskeepers at Augusta, and of course, the community and the collegiate partners. We could not do it without the support of everybody. I do want to encourage you all to please take time this season to come out to one of these events so you can really see it firsthand. I know a number of you already have. But if not, I would encourage you, for those of you that haven't, or to come again and see all the new facilities. To come, I would recommend November 12th, which is the Florida State High School Athletic Association. This is the state cross-country championships. It is the 10th year that we have hosted this event at Appalachian Regional Park. You'll see the families there. You see the brothers and sisters and grandmothers and grandfather. I mean, they're all here to cheer on, you know, their brother, et cetera, that is running in the race. And then November 20th is the NCAA Division One Men's and Women's National Cross Country Championship. That is the big kahuna. So again, I would really recommend those two and be happy to facilitate a visit at any time to any of these events, but those would be the two that I would recommend. I remember five years ago, when we bid to host the NCAA Cross Country National Championships, five years ago, and here we are to think it's now going to be here in November, which is just, and with all the course improvements that are in place, that were part of the Appalachian Regional Park Master Plan, and again, the great event yesterday. We're here. I mean, we're here and kicking off the season. It kicks off this Friday. So again, I mean, to date, the tourism team has bid on and secured every major cross-country event we can bid on. And together with our partners at Florida A&amp;M University, I'm so excited to announce we were recently awarded to host the SWAC 2022 and 2023 Cross Country Championship. So again, five years ago, we were striving, the NCAA championship was the target, and now the target is hosting the World Cross Country Championship in 2026. So that concludes my remarks and highlights for the upcoming season, and I do hope y'all can make it out. It's really incredible it's going out there. And again, really do want to give a hats off to the tourism team and the county parks and rec team. It's amazing what they've done out there.
Thank you so much, Ms. Post, and congratulations on all the great work you and your team are doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have first in the queue, we've got Commissioner Maddox. Is this for this item, sir, or from the last one?
No, this is it. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for staff recommendation.
Sounds good. Commissioner Maddox has made a motion to accept staff recommendation seconded by Commissioner Welch. Have you got Commissioner, any other comments, sir?
Yeah, thank you. I believe five years ago is when we started the improvements, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I remember I got a call from Coach Berman and staff that said, you know, what do you guys think about maybe making some improvements out there to the track and see if we can get the national NCAA championships here? I'm like, we can bring it up and see what happens. Then initial investment, Mr. County Administrator, was how much? You remember?
Mr. County Administrator.
Did you say the initial?
Yeah.
Not very much. It was very organic. And then we just, again, through the budget process, the board provided commitments, we developed long-range plans, we started the master plan of the facility, it was just one step after another.
I just, I bring that up to say, it's a great example of how our local government partners with our universities to create gems within our community that go on to become economic development tools within our community. To think today that we're spending $250,000 to bring in about 1.74 million, I believe it was, or more, into this community from our investment five years ago that was probably somewhere around the tune of maybe 100, 200,000 or so, is absolutely amazing. I want to take this opportunity to thank the sports council staff. Amanda was the leader for so long, and I think now we are praising Ryan, I believe, who is over our sports tourism now. I ask that you continue to push. These types of things are things that we didn't expect five years ago, that now we can count on every single year. Look at all those events that we're going to have here for cross-country. Who would think that Leon County, in the city of Tallahassee, a football town, will be known for its cross-country track? Mr. Administrator, I actually was thinking through the suggestion of a Commissioners Classic whereby I challenged Commissioner Proctor to one lap around that track. Anybody that'd like to watch us try to make it is more than welcome. But seriously, I want to thank staff for their good hard work and all the events that we've been able to bring in, and really appreciate the economic development that's going to come into play. Thank FSU for their initial thought of improving the track to make it an NCAA championship location, and seeing where it's grown now. Just want to thank this commission for continuing to be faithful and thoughtful and investing in the track for us to be able to have it be what it is today. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I think I made a motion for staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Appreciate it. Vice Chair Proctor, Commissioner Welch, and then Commissioner Dozier, if she'd like to speak as well. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shame on Commissioner Maddox for challenging a senior citizen like me to, I can't run a whole lap around no shit. A whole lap? You said a lap? What up? Not too far. But I think what we should do, Ms. Post, Mr. Chairman, is we really need to get about three, four members up here and get a Leon County cross-country, Leon County Board of Commission cross-country team. And I'm going to coach. I'm going to coach y'all. And then we should invite the other 66 counties to send their best three, four commissioners up here and make it a open. And we want to just, I don't think nobody in Alabama can run a lap either. I don't think Georgia got nobody. But we get, you know, we start training Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Jackson and Nick, what we going to call them, I mean, they got the haircut brothers or something like that? And we get them some names, and I think we could really do good on that. So we're excited, and like Commissioner Maddox said, we don't want to go out to no little piddly-diddly stuff. I like the size, the enormity of the idea to have the world come to our castle. And this is the kind of thinking, you know, when you open up playing the Notre Dames of the world, this is what this event is like in terms. Eugene, Oregon is noted for running events and stuff like this. Eugene is on the left coast, but certainly there's no reason why Tallahassee can't become the right coast and become the name of these kinds of events. So much, much love and support to the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Got Commissioner Welch and then Commissioner Dozier, if she'd like to speak. Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, the only time I've ever run was for county commission, and I was successful. So I don't anticipate running around the track at Appalachian Regional Park around the course, because clearly I don't do much of that type of running. As the county commissioner who gets to sit on the tourist development council with Ms. Post, I just want to say that, again, another reflection of very impressive staff effort there to create all these events and sporting events and things like that. Secondarily, you know, credit to all of you who've been around much longer in the sort of evolution of the Appalachian Regional Park from the dump to what it is now, which I tell people all the time, I think is an incredible piece of government work. It's a great example of utilizing your resource as well and transforming one thing into another thing. And I think that's a kudos to all of you who've been around for a while. Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Maddox, good job, Mr. County Administrator. I floated the idea to Ms. Post of naming us like the cross-country capital of the world, but evidently that's been stolen by someplace called Terre Haute, Indiana, which sounds like a terrible name for a place. Terre Haute, I don't even know what that means. So, and Eugene, I think is Track Town, USA, Commissioner Proctor. So I don't know, I think we need to sort of just go ahead and claim like, you know, the cross-country capital of the South or something like that, because clearly we're bringing in some pretty incredible events, a great testament to Carrie and her staff and the county administrator and our economic development folks. And I just want to say, thank you, guys. I'm very proud of you and honored to work with you towards these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Dozier, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, again, a lot has already been said, and I will just say ditto. Y'all have made a lot of great comments. I like the cross-country capital of the South or something else, but if we win the world, maybe we can take that a bit farther. I wanted to go back to a comment that Carrie made about our parks and rec and other folks taking care of this facility as if it were the masters. Even if you don't like golf, you can still watch that tournament and understand exactly what you're talking about, Carrie, that the care and the detail for that environment is incredible, and you can see that at the cross-country track. I am really thrilled that we were there for the day of service. That was our meeting place last Thursday, and we got to have a little preview and see the facilities. I wish I'd been there with you on Monday, yesterday, when you did the grand opening. I think this is a phenomenal addition to all of the work we've already put into the track itself, and I fully support this item. And I'm going to echo what county administrator said, I have no doubt we will bring this home, and this post is well-positioned with all your partners to do that. So I look forward to the events this fall, and great work by our entire team. This is really an innovative solution and has brought incredible gifts to the community in recent years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Cummings.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to just congratulate, give my congratulations to the improvements that have been done at the Appalachian Regional Park, which in my opinion just places it right up there as world, in the world-class category. And I also am excited that you all were able to land a SWAC participation for what, 2022 and 2023? That's awesome. I'm a graduate of a SWAC institution, HBCU, so I commend you on that. But I also, Mr. Chairman, certainly support the item, I believe, the $250,000 investment in trying to secure the 2026 Olympics championship here for cross-country. I think if we are able to land that, we will certainly receive a return on our investment manifold. So congratulations just on the initiative to apply so that we can bring it to Tallahassee, and we can be known in Tallahassee, not only for football, cross-country as well. So I just think everybody involved, including our county administrator and staff, should be commended. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. I'll chime in here. Ms. Post, congratulations again to you and your team. Really excited about this, enthusiastically support the authorization to bid on this. And just real quick, regarding Commissioner Maddox's challenge of doing the lap, you know, I will accept the challenge from Commissioner Maddox and any of you, so long as I can go to Harley-Davidson Tallahassee and borrow the bike of my choice for that lap. So District 3, by the way, District 3. We got, actually, we got Vice Chair Proctor. Any last comments, sir?
You know, this is getting interesting, you accepted that challenge, and Commissioner Welch is, I think he's backed down, or backed up, but pre-COVID, didn't the county have a softball team or we used to have a, something like that? How many people do you need to have a team in cross-country? How many is that?
10. Typically, it's 10.
Do we have 10 county employees? I mean, seriously, Leon County Cross.
Commissioner Proctor, from what I heard, the amount of ACLs and elbows and shoulders that were knocked out of place, I believe, they might have retired.
Well, we got Tallahassee Orthopedic backing us up, so we can handle those elbows and bad knees. Do we have 10 Leon County employees that we could field a team? And I know we can get a softball team up, but I'm pondering that, and I'm going to leave that, let that linger, and maybe there may be interest by 2026. I'll be 1,000 years old by 2020.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. All right, we'll move on to the motion to accept the option one, which is authorizing the bid for the World Championship, Cross Country Championship, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you very much. I know we need to take a break for dinner, but I think we might be able to get through one more agenda item. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item seeks the board's, actually, excuse me, I just jumped the gun a little bit and went to a, speaking of cross-country, I went to an item that was a little bit ahead of this one. So this is, again, Commissioners, this seeks your consideration related to virtual citizens' comments during commission meetings and select committees. And so Commissioners, essentially, what our recommendation here is that, in light of the resurgence of the COVID-19 virus related to the Delta variant, that we, that the board consider the temporary continuing of virtual citizen comments and assessing return to pre-pandemic meeting processes when the county is no longer designated as an area of substantial or high transmission by the CDC. With that, Commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. I have just one speaker on this item who's joining us virtually.
Thank you, Commissioner County Administrator. Would you please introduce that speaker?
The speaker is Jeff Blair.
Mr. Blair, thank you for being here virtually, sir. Would you please state your name and address to the record? You have three minutes.
Are you able to hear me, Commissioner?
Just barely.
Yeah, it takes a second when you first give me your control to get things working here.
We can hear you now.
All right. Well, thank you. I'm Jeff Blair, 1803 Old Fort Drive in Tallahassee. I've been before you numerous times on this issue, and I speak on behalf of Keeper Rural Woodland Drive Neighborhood Association and previously on Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. We are respectfully requesting that you direct staff to prepare an analysis of ways to expand citizens' involvement prior to and during commission meetings. But primarily at this point, please direct staff to implement permanent procedures for submitting written online comments and providing real-time comment virtually during commission and committee meetings. As I've mentioned before, it's hard for many people to get to downtown and park and deal with all those different things, and I heard some commissioners saying that, you know, they should be able to do that, but these are people who are doing this on a volunteer basis, and it is difficult. I personally have really appreciated being able to address committees such as the Development Review Committee and a committee I sit on, the Citizens of Quality Growth, and being able to do that from home. So it makes it much easier. We are asking that you please amend your procedures as needed and to provide three options for public comment, same as the city does.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Which is, wait, I'm not done yet, sorry.
My apologies, go ahead.
In person at the meetings, written via online submission. I was really disappointed and shocked to find that I couldn't submit a written comment online, other than to send them to online, other than to send them to each of you, which I did. So, we should be able to do that permanently using the Leon County Florida Gov. website and virtually on an online platform. So, again, the three options should be permanently made available, which is in-person, written online submissions, and virtually. Since you're going to be taking a break, and I've been on since 2:30, I'm going to make a quick comment about the COVID thing. I would appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing. I would like to even say that I think we should go further and have a mandatory countywide requirement irrespective of our state government leaderships preempting local governments and denying objective science and data, and also not really following the facts. So, I would appreciate that comment as well, that we, I totally support a mandatory countywide mask requirement until such time as the COVID pandemic has been quelled. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blair. Mr. County Administrator, any other speakers?
Conclude your speakers.
Okay, great. We've got Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Cummings, and then we'll check in with Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Maddox?
Move staff recommendation.
All right. Motion's been made to move staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Welch again. Any further comment, Commissioner Maddox? All right. Moving on to Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to reiterate my support for this move. I would like to thank the county administrator for bringing this back and looking at it as a, at the actual cost of it. I just think it's good government for us to provide the opportunity for folks to participate virtually in perpetuity. I realize that this creates a bit of a burden for staff, but I think it's imperative that we give the public as many opportunities as possible to participate with us, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Dozier? Mr. Cummings.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to articulate my agreement with the Option One. I think it's very important that we hear from the citizens that we serve. We're elected to serve the citizens and not ourselves. So, in this time of pandemic, when individuals are reluctant to gather in a room for several hours, I think it's important that we hear from them, and thank God for technology, that we do have the virtual option to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Dozier, any comments?
Um, yes, sir. You can hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we can.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was off mute. Thank you. And just for clarification, the motion on the table is for Option One, is that correct?
Staff recommendation, yes. Option One.
Okay. So, I won't reiterate a lot of the arguments I've made in the past. I do think this should be a permanent policy, as Commissioner Welch said. I appreciate the information about the cost implication of this, but increasing the amount of time and availability of the ways that citizens can communicate with this board, but also with the DRC, Planning Council, and others, is really important. I know just recently, the Development Review Committee, Planning Council, has had a lot of big projects, and a lot of people could not take time out of work to attend those meetings, and the virtual option was really invaluable for them because they met in the morning, particularly the DRC. And I think that would be beneficial regardless of whether we were in the middle of a pandemic. So, I would like to make a motion for Option Three, to make this a policy of the board going forward, not a temporary policy just for the time of COVID. And I'm going to challenge my colleague, Commissioner Welch. I think I just heard you say that you wanted this to be a permanent policy and not something temporary, and yet you seconded the previous motion. So, I just want to make sure that we were clear on what Option One was and what it does and what it does not do. So, I would like to see this be an ongoing policy of the board, and that is my motion for Option Three.
Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much. I know it's real hard being virtual, but there is a motion on the floor already for Option One. So, if you were to make that motion, it would have to be in the form of a substitute motion.
It was a substitute motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. So, substitute motion was made. Commissioner Welch?
Yeah, I just want to speak to that. I mean, my understanding is that this, Mr. County Administrator, will prolong this at $3,500 a month, that's $42,000 a year, it's 12 months. Is that correct?
Mr. County Administrator.
That's the annualized impact there, and you've got the per-month correct, and it would just be for the duration of time. Again, what we were planning to do, if this was the direction of the board's staff's recommendation, was to, as we say, bring it back to you after we're no longer considered a community of substantial or high transmission. And at that point, the board could make any further decisions you like, if you didn't decide to do something different tonight.
Correct. That was my understanding, Commissioner Dozier. I don't want to put the cart too far out in front of the horse and give staff the benefit of, you know, just kind of sticking with it for now, and then we can readdress it once we get to a point where we are outside of the sort of COVID scenario that we're in now. So, I'm fine maintaining my second, keeping it, going with staff recommendation, and then revisiting it further down the road. But I just want to, wanted to reiterate that I do think this is a policy that we can, that we should support, but I'm willing to give the rest of the commissioners the benefit of the doubt on waiting to discuss that further at a future date.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Is there a second for the substitute motion? Okay, the substitute motion dies for lack of a second. We go back to the original motion at hand.
Mr. Chair?
What's that?
Mr. Chair, if I may just follow up real quick?
Please make it brief, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification, Commissioner Welch. I will support the original motion, of course. I think this needs to continue. However, I think at some point, if a majority of us do feel like virtual comments should be an ongoing option beyond the pandemic, we just need to make that decision and be done with it. We've seen this agenda item many times and have this conversation many times, and I think we leave the impression that we may not be committed to it in the future. So, I, again, I do appreciate your clarification because I was a little confused about that, and I look forward to having this conversation again at some point in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And let me jump in here real quick. I agree with this primarily along the lines of what Commissioner Welch has already expressed. I'm going to be voting for Option One, which is staff's recommendation for this temporary maintaining of the current situation, recognizing that when it, when this county becomes, once COVID-19 has been put to rest to a degree, it'll come back to us. At that point, we'll have that discussion on whether or not this is something we want to continue going forward. I recognize what Mr. Blair and others have said. I'm of the opinion that it's probably something we do want to continue after the pandemic recedes, but for the time being, I'm content with maintaining Option One. Commissioner Maddox, do you have any comments, sir? Okay. Anybody else? All right. Motion on the floor is made by, for staff recommendation, Option One, by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Vice Chair Proctor, what was your vote, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll continue on for Agenda number thirty, Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce that item?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the board's full appointment to the Leon County Research and Development Authority Board of Governors. Option One has the LCR DA nominating committee's recommendation of Brian Dash for your consideration.
Move Option One.
All right. Commissioner Maddox has moved Option One. Is there a second? I'll second that. Commissioner Cummings, it's up for the second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Cummings? Say aye. Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks the board's full appointment to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, the Architectural Review Board, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, and the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Commissioners, if it would help facilitate, I'll go one by one, starting with Option One, which is to appoint one citizen to the Animal Control Advisory Board, and you have five names in consideration before you, eligible applicants.
All right. Commissioner Cummings, are you in the speaker's queue, ma'am, or is that from the last item? Commissioner Cummings, are you on the speaker's queue for this item, or is it for the last one?
No, I apologize.
Okay. Any suggestions or motions, Commissioners? Any comments at all on the candidates for Animal Shelter Advisory Board?
If we can start with the reappointments, I will go ahead and make a motion for the reappointments on the women, on the status of women and girls. I believe you have three there that want to be reappointed at their events, is that correct?
This is to seeking your appointment of one citizen, and you have four eligible applicants before you.
Yes, I understand, but I was talking about Option Number Four there, where they're all reappointments, correct?
That is correct.
I'll make a motion for those reappointment.
All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox for those reappointments on Option Four, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any discussion? All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what was your vote, ma'am, on Option Four?
In support.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. Any other motions, Commissioners?
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and make a motion for Kristal Behary for Option One, I mean, yeah, for Animal Advisory Board.
I will second that, if I'm allowed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Maddox, can you repeat the name, please?
It's eligible applicant number one, Kristal Behary.
Okay. All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, seven-zero.
Mr. Chair, I make a, I'm sorry.
I'll propose Nicole Nicholas, seconded by remaining term.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by who? I'm sorry. Commissioner Welch. All those opposed, all those in favor of Option Three is stated by Commissioner Jackson. Say aye.
Mr. Chair, I didn't hear the motion.
Oh, Mr. Jackson, Commissioner Jackson, would you please restate your motion, please?
Yes, appointing single citizen Nicole Nicholas to-
Mr. Chair, I still can't hear Commissioner Jackson.
I'll turn on my lunchroom voice. Appoint Nicole Nicholas to the alternate seat on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for remainder of the unexpired term that ends on June 30th of 2022.
And that motion was made by Commissioner Jackson and seconded by Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Dozier? Any discussion? All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. Mr. Maddox?
Mr. Chair, for clarification, Ms. Rowe wanted to be reappointed for the status, Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. There were two new appointments there, that was Dr. Torres, Torres and Dr. McKendrick. Are those understood to be a part of that motion, Mr. Administrator? Do I need to make that motion?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead and make a motion for James, I believe it's James Black, James Butler, for the Architectural Review Board. That's Option Number, that's Table Two, Option Two.
I'm sorry, Option What, Number What?
That's Table Two, Option Two, I believe, for the Architectural-
No, Option Two. All right. Any, is there a second for that motion? Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier for Option Two. All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what was your vote, ma'am?
In support.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, seven-zero. Mr. County Administrator, does that conclude the options for this agenda item?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Proctor, are we going? Time for, all right. Commissioners, I think we'll take the world aboard on this, but we may want to take a brief break for-
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, other than the add-on item, we do have add-on item number thirty-nine.
Yep, we can try to take that one on, that might take a little bit of time.
Okay.
Is the world aboard to continue? Press on?
Recommend that we press through thirty-nine, it may take a few minutes.
That's fine by me. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce item number thirty-nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item was added to today's agenda based on the direction provided at the board's meeting last week, a special meeting. This item provides analysis and policy options regarding additional mitigative measures the county may implement to slow the spread of COVID-19. Specifically, this item provides information and seeks board direction on whether to implement face covering, a face covering requirement within Leon County government facilities, and whether to implement a requirement for tourism grant recipients to require face coverings at county-funded events. As the item discusses in detail, Commissioners, Leon County has followed CDC public guidance throughout the pandemic with respect to face coverings, temperature screenings, and the safe conduct of county operations to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The county has posted clear signage in all facilities, is providing free face coverings to any citizen who needs one, and the vast majority of citizens are currently following the CDC's public health guidance in our county facilities, or do so when asked. However, the county does have legal authority to, as a property owner, to go a step further and to require face coverings to be worn within county facilities, and certainly, Chastity Osteen, our county attorney, can provide more detail on that, should the board wish to do so. If so, the agenda item before you recommends that such a requirement apply in indoor areas where Leon County government businesses conducted, such as county offices, areas, and libraries. The analysis does not recommend applying the requirement to private tenants, county buildings, lobbies, common areas within county buildings, which also house private tenants or county constitutional officers. Finally, Commissioners, with respect to tourism and COCA grants, the FY22 grant cycle is still in progress at this time, and grant agreements have not yet been executed. Should the board wish to do so, the county could require, the board may require these grantees to implement face covering requirements at indoor county-funded events as a condition of receiving funding. Should the board wish to pursue either of these strategies, the item recommends that it remain in place until such time that the county is no longer in an area of substantial or high transmission, again, as defined by the CDC. And with that, Commissioners, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, and welcome any policy direction the board may wish to provide.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Would you please introduce, how many speakers do we have for this item?
Eight speakers on this item.
All right. Would you please introduce the first speaker?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, the first speaker, Joanne Mendez-Arrup, and I apologize if I've pronounced your name wrong.
Hello, ma'am, thank you very much for coming. Would you please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes?
My name is Joanne Mendez, I'm a family nurse practitioner, I'm active. My address is 8901 Wingfoot Drive. Been practicing medicine for over forty years. I know where all the bodies are buried. We have a sick healthcare system. If you look at this, this says that the WHO, wherever the cameras are, there, the WHO and the CDC have informed the public that the PCR test is worthless. I will say that again. The PCR test is worthless. It's showing inflammation. If you look and talk and read, it's work by great virologists. It's out there. The media's not talking about it. MIT graduate Dr. Andrew Kaufman, Dr. Judy Mikovits, Dr. Stefan Lenko, Dr. Tom Cowan. They have not isolated the virus. A computer isolated the virus. These masks are a joke. I have worked with infectious disease my entire career. I've never had a contagious disease attack my body from any of my patients, and I gave CPR to the mouth, the old days. We are a sick culture. We are inundated with fear and ignorance. We are not following any science, and our government has failed every one of us, and our tax dollars are going to hell. So, I ask you, I gave you, I encourage everybody to look at this, and if you live in Tallahassee and you don't want to segregate and isolate, then post this on the place you work. I gave you all four pages of science. I'm asking you to get your head out of the sand. You don't realize what you are doing. I take care of vaccine-injured people. I take care of electrically sensitive individuals. individuals, and when you look at the symptoms of COVID and 5G, they are the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next speaker?
The next speaker is Judah Young.
Hello, sir. Thank you very much for coming. Would you please state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
My name is Judah Young, and I live at 1117 Willow Crossing. The commission is constantly staying there, following the science and the data to make their informed decisions to stop the spread of COVID-19. However, the commission is ignoring the science from Dr. Robert Malone. He is the inventor of the mRNA technology used in the current COVID vaccine. Through his current data, we are learning that the vaccines only have a six-month duration and also showing signs of antibody dependency enhancement. This is likely causing the higher rate of transmission to cause for the Delta variant mutation. Because ADE, a vaccine has never been effective on RNA virus, including HIV, hepatitis C, SARS-CoV-2, MERS. There's always been an adverse reaction that enhanced the disease. The commission is ignoring the data by the NIH, that NIH has funded and conducted by Stanford University, which result in the extreme lack of efficacy for face masks. According to the study, the virus diameter is 1,000 times smaller than thread diameter of a mask. Also included in this Stanford study is the health risk of wearing masks. Some of these include hypoxemia, acidosis, decline in pH levels, increased stress hormones, self-contamination, insomnia, fatigue, headaches, anxiety, depression, and cardiovascular disease. According to the World Health Organization, over 1,000 more people died in August 2021, last month, than in August 2020, last year. Despite lockdowns, regulations, and vaccines being implemented, more people have died, not less. Leon County has suffered a total death rate of .07%. The state of Florida has suffered a total death rate of .2%. In 2019, heart disease accounted for 22% of all Florida deaths. Influenza and pneumonia accounted for 1.3% of all deaths, and diabetes caused 2.9% of all Florida deaths. In fact, COVID-19 would rank as the 23rd leading cause of death in the state of Florida, according to Department of Health in 2019. Why do the county officials feel compelled to keep us safe from COVID, yet is perfectly content with letting you die from the other 22 leading causes of death? The county officials now are willing to defy State Bill 72, the civil liabilities for damages relating to COVID-19. The commission is suggesting to have you jailed or fined for not wearing a mask on county property. They're also going to mandate vaccine, vaccines for, to maintain your employment, while they deny to show you their very own proof of vaccination. In doing so, the commission and administrator have to ignore the science and the data. They will have to ignore the Nuremberg Code. They will have to ignore the Constitution and the morals on which it was written. They will have to ignore your freedom so they have the illusion of their safety. I'm here today to remind you that your policies violate the principles by which Americans operate. History is constant repetition with new tyrants hoping to consume what they can control. The time we are living in now is no different, but you will be met with non-compliance every step of the way. We are not going anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Young. I remind you to please, uh, please put your mask on. I'll leave, I'll leave the room. Thank you, Mr. Young. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker, Bill Bowling.
Mr. Bowling, thank you for coming, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm Bill Bowling, 1500 Harbor Club Drive, Tallahassee. Want to speak on vaccine hesitancy. Last week, it became clear that a number of the commissioners, if not all of you, felt that was a problem in Leon County. The COVID vaccine is not a true vaccine as the term has been traditionally defined. For example, smallpox vaccine contains a minute portion of the virus, which when injected, causes antibodies to be produced by the body. The COVID shot is an experimental gene therapy with no long-term studies using a control group. It is an mRNA technology which has never undergone any long-term trials. As one author said, this is.
Mr. Bowling, I'm sorry, sir, but you need to put your mask on.
I got some scientist problems and I don't talk well. Um, it is an mRNA technology which has never undergone any long-term trials. As one author said, this is the greatest medical experiment in world history. If you get the shot, you are in the experimental group. If not, you're in the control group. On May 18th, 2020, I attended a lecture by Simone Gold, MD in Tallahassee. Using data from the CDC, she explained my chance of dying from COVID without any treatment is less than 1%. She reported there were several cheap and available drugs which she used to treat COVID patients, including hydroxychloroquine and zinc, which reduced the likelihood of death even, uh, farther. Now, Dr. Gold was fired from her job for continuing to treat patients with this at a large Kaiser Hospital in San Francisco, or in California. Although the media is prone to call this a pandemic of the unvaccinated, in my opinion, they skewed the data. These figures were taken from January 1, 2021, to June 30, 2021, and obviously, few were vaccinated earlier in the year. In contrast, nations that have heavily vaccinated populations, the UK and Israel, are seeing more vaccinated patients in the hospital. I predict that this, uh, pattern is going to continue worldwide. I recently read that in Israel, 60% of those who died over the age of 50 had received two shots. This vaccine does not seem to work very well. When the H1N1 vaccine was tested after 25 people died, they ended the trial. Last time I looked at VAERS, there were over 11,000 deaths. Why the discrepancy? Also, there have been thousands of serious adverse effects, including myocarditis, Guillain-Barre, blood clots, and serious spastic neurological conditions. Some of these I've observed on the internet with the victims begging the audience, "Do not get this shot." Last week, I made the comment, "I thought you had made a terrible decision by forcing vaccination on your employees, because if any of these adverse effects happen on one Leon County employee, you're on the hook for a multimillion-dollar lawsuit." We live in a county full of hungry attorneys. In summary, every medical decision must be made by evaluating risk versus benefits. I do not believe the risks of the COVID shot are worth the benefits. I prefer to take care of my immune system with a healthy diet, controlling weight, sensible exercise, getting plenty of sleep, and by taking selected nutritional supplements.
Mr. Bowling, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker, Susie Bowling.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. When you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Absolutely. My name is Susie Bowling, and I live at 1500 Harbor Club Drive. We should not even be having this conversation regarding additional COVID mitigation measures because what the commission wants to implement and what has been implemented is unconstitutional. Our nation was founded on individual liberty and freedom. We, the people, have sacred, God-given, inalienable rights that no governor, government, no group, no person has authority to violate, to take away. It is not the role of the government to decide what rights we have and what rights we don't have. Our sacred, inalienable rights are secured and protected by our Bill of Rights. We know Amendment 1, freedom of religion, expression thereof, and freedom of speech. Amendment 4 protects our right to be secure in our own persons. Hmm. Amendment 13 protects us from slavery or involuntary servitude. Our elected officials are voted in to serve we, the people, and not the other way around. Our, our Constitution and Bill of Rights were written to protect us from an overreaching government that mandates or requires people to comply with healthcare treatments, practices that no government has the right or constitutional right to implement on the people in the first place. Your authority is limited and confined by the Constitution you swore an oath to. The commission is legally bound to service in the parameters of our Constitution and our Bill of Rights, and mandating our, mandating our personal healthcare practices is clearly outside those parameters. Governor DeSantis honors our constitutional rights to choose and decide our own healthcare practices. Senate Bill 2006 and its ban on mask mandates demonstrates this. I believe that those of you on our commission, I think you want to do what's right, but what is being done under the guise of health and safety is unconstitutional and violates our Bill of Rights. Perhaps you didn't understand what you were doing because of the speed of what this thing was thrown at the people, but this, it's been 18 months. We hope you under, I hope you understand now, and I hope you end the mandates. Please do the right thing and honor our constitutional rights.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, April Banta. Next speaker, April Banta.
Hello, ma'am. Thank you for being here. Please, uh, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi. Good evening. My name's April Banta, 3125 Lisa Court, Tallahassee. Um, I love my science speakers. I wish I had the confidence and the intellect to speak to what some of these folks have spoken to. Um, I'm, I'm just here to talk about freedom. We live in America, the land of the free, the home of the brave, and I do not enjoy standing here talking to you guys. Uh, this is, activism is not my thing, but I am compelled to be brave because I am not compelled to wear a mask. I'm not compelled to take a vax for health. I'm compelled to work with my doctors and my healthcare advisors on what I should do to be able to have confidence when I walk outside my house. I think we're driven by fear in the media. Uh, that's all I hear coming out. Somebody said earlier, um, that we're not voting on a mask mandate for Leon County. We're not voting on a mask or a vax mandate, but guess what? It all starts somewhere. Snowballs have an odd way of collecting speed and momentum and volume, and that's what this is. It's a snowball. We started out 18 months ago to slow the spread, to flatten the curve. That was for two weeks. We're 18 months in. Then, we're mask mandating, we're social distancing, we're locking down. I don't even remember how long we locked down, three months. Fast forward a year and a half later, and we're still at mask mandates, vax mandates, or lose your job. Two shots, not enough. Now there's a third one. When will the fourth one be required? Where does this end? Chasing synthetic immunity is a never-ending rabbit hole. I am chasing my God-given body immunity, and I will stand behind that whether I catch COVID or not, whether I die from COVID or not. I will stand behind my decisions. We're in America. We get to make our own health and wellness decisions, and I think that it should stay that way. Again, I'm not here to work with you on what my health looks like. I'm not here to work with anyone except my doctors, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Banto. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Norma Reiser.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Norma Reiser, 1506 Hichinini. May I cede my time to my friend?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. I've made some bullet points. I'd like to put it into a bigger context. We live in Tallahassee, but we're part of the world. Censorship has suppressed too much of the science around this international crisis. The power brokers of the world benefit from this crisis financially. Pharmaceutical companies have illegitimate authority in my healthcare choices. Our American regulatory bodies, the FDA, the CDC, the NIH, are controlled by big pharmacy. Our health here in the United States was a disaster before 2020. Americans have many chronic illnesses. The germ theory of disease needs to be replaced by the terrain theory. How can we expect to have good health on our planet when we are saturated by toxins? In the past 25 years, we have blanketed the planet with EMFs from the digital revolution. The present rollout of the next generation of wireless communication is toxic levels of microwave radiation. It is naive to think an experimental injection will save us from our polluted terrain. If we do not clean up the planet on an individ, or our individual bodies, we will not make progress on eliminating diseases. We are full of toxins. If we ignore that, that's our peril. I would like to live in a democracy where I am able to choose my healthcare. Am I not the owner of my own body? Mandatory vaccinations violate our individual freedoms and rights, and I encourage everybody to go deeper than the mainstream media. The silencing, the desilencing of the dissenting science is horrific, and I know there are many people that would like to speak out publicly but cannot because they will feel they will lose their jobs. Medical people, science people who get silenced. There are death threats against medical people all around the planet because they are not, they are not following the official narrative of the world's oligarchs that are running this planet. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Christina Hunter.
Ms. Hunter, you here?
Not seeing Ms. Hunter. Uh, we've got two Zoom speakers joining us, Marion, uh, uh, D, uh, Dior Angelus, uh, and to be followed by Jeff Blair.
Uh, Ms. Darkangelis, I think, uh, you have three minutes. Uh, please state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
No. Uh, let me call in Jeff Blair. No? Let me call Jeff Blair one more time? It's okay. He does. I got, I got the information. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I've got 5:48. Um, it's up to the will of the board. We could, uh, recess for 10 minutes, then return at 6:00 PM sharp, which would actually need to be, talk about the public hearing agenda items. So what that would mean is that we would need to start at 6:00 PM, uh, with the public hearing agenda items, and then after those agenda items, come back on agenda item 39, or we can decide to press on, um, discuss number 39 for, up until 6:00 PM, go through those agenda items for the public hearing at 6:00 PM, and then finish up at the meeting when we're done. What's the preference of the board? Okay. That sounds good. Okay. All right. Well, it sounds good. So we, so the, the board will continue, uh, discussing, uh, item number 39. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, I've got you in the speaker's queue. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Attorney, if we're not done discussing by 6 o'clock, will we have to, um, get our decision to item, go to public hearing, and then come back?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would advise that since that is when it was scheduled to, the public hearings are scheduled to start, so I would defer, uh, and continue this until after the public hearings have concluded, if necessary.
Mr. Chair, in the effort to just create some order prior to us getting to that point, I'll go at your discretion.
Okay. Uh, okay, pressing on, or we are kind of at a breaking point on item 39? Okay, we'll move forward. Okay. Um, Ms. Commissioner Cummings, so I have you in the speaker's queue for this item, or is that from the last one? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would actually recommend, this was Commissioner Dozier's item that she brought to us. I would actually recommend that she speak first.
All right.
If she would, if she would, if she would like to.
Commissioner Dozier, do you have any comments or motions, uh, ma'am?
Um, Mr. Chair, yes, I, I do have a couple of things specific to this item and a couple of things that, um, we didn't get back to earlier in the meeting. I, I could speak to it now, but I was kind of with Commissioner Maddox that breaking at 6:00 and then continuing this after the public hearing might be a little challenging, but if that was the will of the board, we can move forward now.
There was a general consensus to press forward up until 6:00 PM?
Okay. I just, I couldn't see the full board, so thanks for that.
Understand, understand.
So for the two issues that are in this agenda item, and, um, we have a lot of good information, um, masks in county facilities and the events, does it Tallahassee and the COCA, um, events, whose contract has not been signed, and those folks did submit COVID mitigation plans when they applied for those grants. Um, I think it is important to say that we do have a legal and administrative analysis of this, and we can move forward with both of these items. Um, there's been a lot of comments about these. There's been a lot of comments about these mitigation measures not being legal, but I think they absolutely are, and I'm glad we have the agenda item that really went through all the details. For masks in facilities, I think this is something we should do. I do not think we need enforcement measures. I don't want to put any of our staff in that position. We are challenged to get 100% compliance, of course, and I think there's ways, as articulated in the item, that staff can work with folks to meet with them outside or take other steps to provide services if they aren't going to comply with the mask mandate. But again, this is just for county facilities. And importantly, for me, the libraries were top on my list. If we've got families and children there who cannot yet get vaccinated, I think it really is important to have a mandate for county facilities. I've received, I'm sure you all have as well, a lot of emails on this issue, and there's a lot of support. I've heard directly from parents and grandparents who have said that they really appreciate the suggestion of having masks in our libraries. For the events, I received some information from COCA, and it looks like right now we are about 40% or more. It was 41% of the current events that are requiring masks, and that's really fantastic. I'm glad our grant recipients have stepped up to do that. 27% are recommending, and 32% are encouraging. So all of our recipients who have events in the next few months are taking steps to keep their folks safe. And I think this is really significant. We want them to hold these events. We do not want to go backwards into any kind of shutdown or anything like that. But this is how we stay safe, and this is a step that the county can take and really have their backs for all of our arts and culture organizations that are having events, have their backs and say that if they can't have social distance and be outside, then masks should be required per CDC recommendations at this point. Again, Mr. Chair, there were a couple other issues that are not in this item but are COVID-related. One of them I brought up during the annual report, and I'd like to come back to that. But for time's sake, I would like to make a motion for Options 2 and 3, which would cover county facilities and the event requirements.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Anyone wish to second the motion? I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Options 2 and 3? Motion made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by myself. I've got Commissioner Maddox in the queue, and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be quick. I'll make a motion that we strongly encourage in county facilities, mask-wearing strongly encouraged in county facilities and at county events, but no mandatory requirement at this point. That'd be my motion.
Would that be a substitute motion, Mr. Maddox? Okay.
Point of clarification, so is that Option 4, and that's the board direction?
Commissioner Maddox. Okay, a motion's been made for the substitute motion and seconded for Option 4. Moving on to discussion, Commissioner Maddox, any more comments, sir?
None.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, in another life, I lead a pre-k through eight school, and irregardless of what it says in the options we have here, it will fall upon our employees to be put in very uncomfortable and hard-to-defend situations as it relates to enforcement. I believe signage that reflects strongly recommend the wearing of masks in these facilities is the route that we should choose, and that's why I support the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Welch, and then Commissioner Maddox again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support Commissioner Maddox's motion as well. I have, my concerns are practical in nature. I have no problem with the efficacy of masks or with vaccines, but as a classroom teacher to Commissioner Jackson's point, we're trying to change behavior. And as far as I understand, the CDC's language, Mr. County Administrator, do you have that in front of you, or do you know what the CDC's language is? I believe it says recommends, right?
That is correct.
I agree in the sense that I think that we are without an enforcement mechanism, which clearly we don't have, nor do I think anybody has an appetite for creating. This will practically fall upon our librarians and our county staff in various facilities to enforce, and I think that creates a very uncomfortable situation. I feel like we could substitute CDC with Leon County strongly recommends or encourages mask-wearing in this facility and accomplish the same thing. So I think there are problems with a mandate at this point. Again, the situation is fluid. I think you get a lot further with a carrot than a stick, and so I'm going to support Commissioner Maddox's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matt, is our bailiff still here? Sir, excuse me, sir. I hate to put you on the spot. Can you come up to the podium for a second, please? Thank you. I want to articulate a point here real quick. Thank you for doing this for me. Since we've been here today, have you had people absolutely refuse to wear their mask upon entering the facility?
I wasn't here when everybody come in, but I was told they brought masks in, everybody put them on.
Okay. And if so asked by us, you would enforce that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed. Until we are in a position to put a bailiff at every single Leon County facility, I'm not comfortable putting staff in a position to have to serve their purpose. We've had people here, we've got people here today right now that are not properly wearing a mask. Now, Leon County employee could see that and take it as their duty to go to a person and ask them to properly put on their mask, right? But then what kind of conflict would that cause for that employee to have to deal with? I think we have to think about this thing in the larger picture of enforcement and how we are actually going to go about putting our employees in a position to do what we pay them to do, okay? But also, if we're going to ask for this mandate in our county facilities, creating a situation where a bailiff or a sheriff is there to do what we pay them to do. And so until we get to that point, I'm just not comfortable because our libraries aren't places that our librarian should have to walk up to a constituent and say, hey, put your mask up, getting into a full altercation in that library, trying to put the mask, trying to get that person out, and then eventually have to call the sheriff who comes from across town to have to enforce it. And the time spent doing that, we just, right now, we're just not, I'm just not at that point of having that kind of chaos created within our county facilities. Along with the fact, though, with our events, I think our outdoor events, the recommendation, I think, strongly recommended was indoor events, I believe, and events whereby you can't be, outdoor events where you can't be six feet apart. All in all, I think enforcement becomes the issue. I think it's something that we have to think long and hard about if we're going to move in this direction. And I'm just not ready, again, to put our employees in a position to have to be enforcers of a policy that we place in place, which we can see by, just by sitting here today and hearing these comments, there are people who absolutely will not comply. Did you see the gentleman stand at the podium and blatantly pull his mask down in front of us and walk out, well, stand there for about 10 seconds, as to dare us to tell him to pull it up, and then walk out as the sheriff follows him out to make sure he leaves? That's the kind of situation we're replacing our employees in that aren't trained to deal with those types of situations. Commissioner Jackson, I think, brought it up and said it best. I just don't want to put them in that position. Teachers aren't made to do that. County employees aren't made to do that, and law enforcement isn't made to do that. And until we're able to create that budget or have that budget in place for every county facility, I'm just not there yet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I've got some comments I want to add, but we are at 6 o'clock, so I'd like to entertain a motion to table Item Number 39 so that we can return to it after the public hearing items. Motion's been made by Commissioner Welch. Motion's made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Cummings to table Item 39 until after the public hearing items. All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. All right, Mr. County Administrator, would you please start our scheduled public hearing with Item Number 37?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is the first of two required public hearings. Mr. Chairman, as you know, we've got a statutory script here that we go by, and with that, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it off to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, we are now at Agenda Item Number 37, which is the first public hearing for adoption of fiscal year 2021, 2022 tentative millage rates and tentative budgets. As required by Florida law, as the county administrator said, we must follow a specific procedure for this item. This is the first of two required public hearings on the Leon County budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. The second and final public hearing will be Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. If you wish to speak in person, please complete a speaker's card and turn it into the clerk. Citizens who registered to provide virtual comments will be asked to speak prior to the commission taking votes on the millage rates and budget. Now, the county administrator, Vincent Long, will read the millage rate into the public records.
The proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8144 mils, which is 0.98% over the aggregate rolled-back rate of 8.7290 mils. Advalorm revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values and will be used to support the following. Enhance support for law enforcement and public safety, including additional deputies, technical support personnel, and correctional officers. Sustaining a high level of county-wide service delivery. Sound fiscal planning to avoid fee increases for fire services, EMS, and solid waste. Continued community investment in our parks, greenways, roads, and sidewalks. Commissioners, you've provided the necessary guidance through the development of the tentative budget, and all the direction provided in the various agendas, workshops during the budget process have been included in your FY '22 tentative budget. However, if you distill desire, Commissioner, staff has prepared to provide a brief presentation to you on the budget. If not, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. At this, anyone wish to see the presentation on the budget? Okay, at this time, citizens who wish to speak, who are either appearing in person or virtually, will be allowed to do so. Mr. County Administrator, do you have any speakers on this item?
I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Florida statutes requires the board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. I will now entertain the following motions, one at a time. I'd like to entertain a motion that will adopt via the attached resolution the tentative fiscal year 2021, 2022 countywide millage rate of 8.3144 mils. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, Commissioner Dozier, are you voting on this item, ma'am?
Yes, I'm in support. We're just in the meeting.
Okay. So the motion passes unanimously, 6-0, with Commissioner Cummings out of chambers. The next motion I'd like to entertain is for adopting via the attached resolution the tentative fiscal year 2021, 2022 countywide budget. Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any discussion? All right. All's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, 6-0, with Commissioner Cummings out of chambers. The next motion I'd like to entertain will be to adopt via attached resolution the tentative fiscal year 2021, 2022 emergency medical services MSTU millage rate of 0.5000 mils. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All's in favor of the motion? Aye. Commissioner Dozier, is that an aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, 6-0, with Commissioner Cummings out of chambers. The next motion would be to adopt via attached resolution the tentative fiscal year 2021, 2022 emergency medical services MSTU budget. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am?
I was in, I was in favor.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, 6-0. The last motion will be to entertain a motion to direct staff to advertise, in accordance with the Florida statutes, the tentative millage rates and budgets for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and the date, time, and place of a public hearing to adopt the final millage rates and budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion made by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All's in favor of the motions, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am?
In favor. Sorry, sir.
All right. Motion passes unanimously, 6-0, with Commissioner Cummings out of chambers. And Commissioners, that completes the Agenda Item Number 37. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next item?
Leave, Mr. Chairman, that you're back on Agenda Item 39. No? Oh, I'm sorry, public hearings, yes. And with that, I will defer to the county attorney on public hearing item Number 38. Sorry about that.
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item seeks the board's consideration of a non-advalorm special assessment imposed on all licensed hospitals operating within Leon County to help them cover Medicaid shortfalls. The proposed assessment would allow hospitals to receive federal funds from the Medicaid directed payment program through the local provider participation fund, a fund matching program designed to offset shortfalls in Medicaid reimbursement. Revenue generated as a result of this special assessment should be held by the county in that fund, a separate account, and used solely to, one, provide the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration the non-federal share for Medicaid payments to be made directly or indirectly in support of hospitals serving Medicaid beneficiaries, and, two, to reimburse the county for administrative costs associated with the implementation of the assessment authorized by this ordinance, as further specified in the assessment resolution. The special assessment only apply to the five hospitals in the county, and no residents or local businesses will be subject to the assessment. After the item was published, the county received a request from hospitals subject to the proposed special assessment to initially impose that assessment during this fiscal year 2021 instead of 2022, so that the hospitals can begin taking advantage of the Medicaid directed payment program for that period. If adopted, it is recommended that proposed resolution reflect the 2021 fiscal year. Therefore, I'm recommending Options 1, 2, 3, and 4, but imposing the special assessment for fiscal year 2021. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator or Madam County Attorney, any public speakers on this item?
Only if there are questions. We have a representative of the law firm who is representing the local hospitals on this issue and done legal work.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. County Administrator. First in the speaker's queue, we've got Commissioner Maddox and then Vice Chair Proctor.
Madam Attorney, I believe staff recommendation is to approve.
That is correct.
So moved. Yes, sir.
Motion's been made for Options 1 through 4 by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any other comments, Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Attorney, did you say that we're not imposing an assessment to our taxpayers? We are endorsing an idea by which hospitals can be reimbursed directly from the federal government. Is this a ad hoc way in which Medicaid can extend into Florida? Because Florida's governor refuses to accede to the opportunity of Florida and its legislature agreeing to receive Medicaid payment through the state.
Madam County Attorney.
The only response that I can give to that is that there is always a shortfall in the Medicaid dollars the state pays out, which is a shortfall that the hospitals generally have to eat when it comes to providing that care for Medicaid. have to eat when it comes to providing that care for Medicaid, you know, for those who are eligible for Medicaid, care through Medicaid. What this would do, and it was approved by the federal government, is enable the county to serve as nothing more than a pass-through. The hospitals themselves, who are being assessed, have requested that the county adopt this assessment to enable them to seek that federal funding from the federal government to help close that gap.
Okay, very good. Commissioners, I said earlier that we are being redlining our county, and in particular, the citizens of District 1, those who would qualify for Medicaid. County Attorney, I'm not sure how much money and what the impact if Florida agreed to receive the Medicaid funding, which has been extended by the federal government, to, there's a million people in Florida who qualify, but because of across the street, the people in Leon County have been denied access to care. And this measure right here is directly because of a state like Florida that refuses to receive the Medicaid of the federal government, that now the individual hospitals can still serve poor people but get paid directly from the federal government and not have to wait on ham hock head for across the street. This is a shame. This is a shame. But it reflects this federal government that we currently have, its creativity and effort to provide care, notwithstanding some of these states that refuses to help. So I applaud the Biden administration for its creativity, its genius, and its willingness to work individually with hospitals directly, so that the people who are American citizens in this county and in my district can actually be served by hospitals without being, what, treated and looked down upon, and because they don't have any kind of insurance, and looked as if they're second, third, fourth-class citizens in America. So this is a very good move, and it reflects redlining by that government across the street. But I'm grateful for the one in Washington, D.C., that's willing to step beyond and work directly with our hospitals. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Any other speakers in the queue? Commissioner Dozier, any comments, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, great work by our local healthcare team, and our county staff for getting this done so quickly.
Yeah, and I'd like to reiterate that. I mean, the work done by our staff to get this Agenda Item on this agenda in time to take advantage of this, to benefit the patients, first and foremost, by helping to provide some federal funds to the hospitals is really tremendous, so kudos to our staff yet again. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Options 1 through 4 made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Mr. County Administrator, actually Commissioners, we are now back on Agenda Item Number 39. Would I, could someone please, Madam County Attorney, do you have any comments?
It would just require a motion to take the matter previously tabled.
I was just gonna say that.
So move.
Is there a second to bring item number 39 back off the table and for the consideration? Seconded by Commissioner Welch. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am?
I was in favor. I was in favor, yes.
Great, thanks very much. Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. We are now back on item number 39. I think I'm the last person in the speakers' queue, provided no one else wishes to speak.
Mr. Chair, I'm, Mr. Chair, I would like to be in queue after you, please.
Okay, sounds good. Listen, you know, for the last 19 months, this county commission has worked really well together. We've been united, maybe had disagreements along the way, but as a board, we've been united in how we tackle this virus, and it's been really an honor to serve with each of you in that regard. It's, it's, this last 19 months has been unprecedented. No one could have predicted what we have been dealing with, what the community's been dealing with, the businesses, the homes. But this commission has been really good in working together to address these problems, and I still think we are. You know, last week during our special meeting, I said that everyone here on the dais, you know, I know each of you, and I know that each of you is doing everything he or she can to protect the health and the lives of people who live here. I know that. I know that. We have different perspectives, though. We have two teachers whom have borne a tremendous burden through this virus. We've got others. I mean, we all have different perspectives of what we might need to do to do everything we can to save the health and the lives of people. So I, I think we may have disagreements here. That's okay. I respect each of you and your opinion on this incredibly important issue. I respect the public. I mean, everyone in the public, we all have different backgrounds and different perspectives. And so, and this is a very divisive issue. I mean, we heard the passion and the energy that many of you bring to this. All I can tell you is that, you know, I and the others, I can't speak for them, but I can speak about them because I know them. We're all trying to do everything we can in our mind, with our given perspective and backgrounds, to save as many lives as we can, and respecting everybody's freedoms as much as we can, given these very challenging times. I'm gonna vote against a substitute motion, but I, as I said, I have no ill will toward anyone that has a difference of opinion on this. I respect very much each one of you on this issue. It's life and death, and I know that we're all voting our conscience and what we think is the right thing to do. I'm gonna vote against it, though. All right, any other discussions on the, anyone else in the speakers' queue for the substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman, what we voting on? I'm a little lost, what we've been through.
I was just gonna wrap up. I was going to review where we're at.
I mean, what is the motion that we're voting on?
Mr. Chair, I'm in queue.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Commissioner Dozier. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. If you would like to restate the motion where we are right now.
Sure, sure. So we have a substitute motion on the floor right now. That's Option 4, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. That, if it succeeds, would supersede your original motion that was made by yourself with me seconding. That would, that original motion was options 2 and 3. But the motion on the floor right now is a substitute motion for option number 4.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate the way you frame this, Mr. Chair. I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I've reflected on this a lot in the last few weeks, to be sure, particularly after last week's meeting, because typically, we can disagree very respectfully. We have our debate, we have a vote, and we leave it there. I think this issue, for me and for many others, is really challenging because we lost more people in our community in August of this year than we have at any point in the last 19 months. Because I am not with you today because a family member tested positive and only knew that because in an abundance of caution, got a test after traveling. Asymptomatic, she could have just gone on, and none of us would have ever known. And I've got symptoms, I don't mind sharing that. I'm waiting for my test. But we hear so much about the rights of others, and we got a lot of people in chambers this week and last week who are upset with this. On the other hand, what about the rights of those of us who've done everything we can to keep ourselves, our families, and our community safe? And I add to that this incredible board and organization that has worked so hard over the last 19 months. So I respectfully, but with a lot of heartache, disagree. If we had a mask mandate in place for months last year, and we did not, with most of the same members on this board, and we did not have the debates about enforcement and concerns, I have spoken with the county administrator, I think we can manage a mandate in our facilities and at events without much burden on our staff. The commission meeting is a different environment. This is public comment, and we're gonna hear a lot of different debates. But I'm really troubled by our lack of willingness to do what steps are easy, and quite frankly, just in the minute I had here, this is not exhaustive, but I counted over 20 emails that were in support, and just over five, maybe six, that were against, that I've just gotten in the last 24 hours or so. I don't think we're hearing from those people in chambers who are absolutely supportive of us doing anything we can do. And I really don't know how we can say we are leading by example when we're not setting that example. We have done this for months in the right way, and to come to this point, and significantly, and I'll bring this to a close right now, Mr. Chair, we hear this from our hospitals, from our public health professionals repeatedly, on the news, if not in the chambers. We are still in this because we did not get a handle on the first wave of COVID, because people did not get vaccinated. Our 59% vaccination rate is good, but it needs to be a whole lot better if we're gonna get a handle on this. And I am scared about that third variant and the next surge that we may have. Measures that we take today could help us keep going in the future and save lives. So I guess I am left with the question, if we are not even willing to require masks in facilities or have the backs of those events and grantees that want to require anyhow, and we're looking for some guidance, I don't know what else this board would be willing to do in the coming months, when and if it gets worse. So with that, obviously, I can't support the substitute motion, but I would like to come back after you dispense with this motion to an issue I brought up earlier when Claudia was out of the room, Ms. Blackburn, and that is about the data and the metrics. I've got a question for the county administrator about that, and I also brought up an issue about the vaccine mandate during the annual report, which we didn't come back to. So, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it back to you to dispense with this motion, but if we can take this time to just have a little more discussion about those two issues, I would appreciate it, and I think it is significant and would set the tone for our future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. What I'd like to recommend is that you bring up those other two items after this Agenda Item is voted on during your items for discussion.
I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We've got Commissioner Cummings, and then I think that will be it for the speakers on this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need to clarify the motion, and I believe the motion is that we would adopt a strong recommendation that individuals wear masks in county buildings. So we're not talking about the masks is countywide, we're only talking about within county structures. Am I correct? Okay. And that's pretty much the parameters, and I believe part of the motion is that we'd not adopt any enforcement procedures as far as that concerned, just strongly recommend wearing masks in county facilities.
Yeah. And Commissioner Cummings and for the board, the county administrator just wanted us to point out that that is currently what we're doing. So what Commissioner Maddox's motion is basically for keeping the policy the same, which is already to strongly recommend mask-wearing at county facilities. Okay. All right, any other questions about the motion that we're gonna go on? Yes, Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification. I had meant to ask exactly that question, so thank you, Commissioner Cummings, for clarifying. I'm not sure what this motion does that we are not already doing. And so we do have signage that recommends masks. CDC is recommending masks, and that is what COCON goes to Tallahassee, I believe, are letting folks know, the grantees know, and that's why so many of those are already recommending or requiring. So this motion just affirms what we're already doing. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator?
Mr. County Administrator.
That's correct.
All right. Commissioner Cummings, your comment's concluded, ma'am?
But just a follow-up question, so is that what is recommended by county and staff? To just reiterate and solidify what we already doing?
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, let me find a little more clarification on that one. Commissioner Cummings, yes, we didn't make a recommendation on this one. Again, we feel like it's important that this reflect really whatever the commission's preference is. Again, we point out what we're currently doing and what's available to you in terms of additional mitigation, but we didn't make a recommendation. Again, this is very public-facing, a little bit different than some of the other actions that we've taken, and we recognize that that may be a policy issue that the board may wish to consider.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I've got, just to wrap it up, let's try to, because I think everyone's spoken at least once, we have got Vice Chair Proctor and then Commissioner Cummings again, is that correct?
I just had a follow-up question.
Okay, okay.
I have the Commissioner Cummings.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Cummings, why don't you continue with your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'd like to direct this to a county administrator. Have we had any major issues in county facilities as far as asking people to wear their masks? Or any, you know, beli, you know, beli, beli, you know, individuals that staunch against it? Do we have any of those instances at all?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cummings, as we reported in the item, we generally have good compliance with our current recommendations in our county work areas. That's what our county work areas have reported.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What Commissioner Maddox's motion allows us to do is to close ranks, and there should not be wind blowing on the backs of our administrators, our administration. And it gives us a chance to affirm that our county administrator is not running a government willy-nilly and without the support of our board. So to affirm what already is in place, but to affirm it with a formal vote of this commission closes the rank. It does not have administration separated from the board, acting without board support. So I think that, thank Commissioner Maddox for his thoughtfulness, and this is something that we need to do in a time like this, that, in his courageousness, that there is nothing from us that's formally, I think our tacit support is not strong enough. We need to be on record, and that's what this allows us to do.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Okay, well, now move to a vote. A motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Aye.
Okay. So Commissioner Dozier, that is an aye, right? So that is a 6 in favor of the motion as stated?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I was voting against it with you.
Okay. So the motion carries 5 to 2 with Commissioner Dozier and myself in dissent. Thank you all very much, Commissioners. All right, let's move on to the next item. We are now, Mr. County Administrator, we are now at citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
We have one speaker virtually, Jeff Blair.
Mr. Blair, thank you for joining us virtually. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
All right, well, I appreciate you doing this. I wasn't on when you tried earlier, but I wasn't provided the chance. Anyway, I wanted to speak on this, on this particular issue, and to say that the, from my perspective and many I've spoken to, irrespective of the well-orchestrated group of folks who showed up today to speak about personal rights, personal rights do not transcend the greater rights of society or the greater rights of healthcare. It's no different than smoking cigarettes on top of people's food. Is that a personal right? No, it's not. It's against the greater good of society, and personal rights, our personal rights do not transcend the greater good of society. The strategy for appropriately responding to COVID-19 pandemic should be based on objective science and data and not the politicization of a public health issue. U.S. our local government officials should be allowed to make appropriate decisions for protecting their citizens and not preempted from doing so by an executive order. Irrespective of state preemption, Leon County should take leadership on the COVID-19 pandemic by requiring face coverings in all indoor environments, including our schools. Further, although I am not advocating for this on this Agenda Item, about a legitimate medical exemption, all employees should be required to be vaccinated. Pandemics don't burn through a population, and even with herd immunity, immunity, which we will not get if people don't get vaccinated.
pontificate it, contemplate it, uh, this measure enough so that we can affirm, uh, and stand with, uh, our administrator, uh, in a formal type way, more solidified. So those things said, I thank you for bringing that up, but, uh, we can't take the governor serious for anything on healthcare, in particular for poor people. Thank you.
Mr. County Minister, do you have a comment you want to bring?
Very, very briefly, and the commissioners, you know, I don't normally get in at this point, but, but I, given what Commissioner Proctor said and, and all the issues related to this, I should probably just provide just a brief, uh, statement to you. First of all, commissioners, uh, my foremost obligation to, uh, to this board, uh, and to the citizens of the community is to have a workforce, um, that is operationally ready to respond to the needs of this community, not only COVID-19 related, but all the needs of the community, especially during hurricane season and other things. We, that, that is our foremost responsibility. The, this, this argument of individual rights, um, this is, we are an employer. Um, people do have individual rights. Uh, you do not have an individual right to a job. This is a condition of employment. There are conditions of employment in certain agencies, and making it a condition of employment is not a discriminatory action as, um, concluded by the EEOC. So it's definitive and, uh, in my mind, and, um, you've heard from the county attorney on, uh, on, on the larger legal, legal matters, um, uh, that are, that are at play here. And of course, we will both, and we're in complete lockstep on this, and we will both bring back, um, any updates to the board, but I just wanted to say that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Real quick, Vice Chair Proctor, was, was you have a motion? Did you just issue a motion in that, I know you were talking?
No, I, I said that, um, consistent with what the administrator just said, we ought be, um, people enough to take a formal vote on the 28th to support that. Uh, he stepped out first, uh, uh, I think Walmart, uh, I believe Delta, uh, I mean, multiple other counties, uh, long took that step, and a whole lot of bigs followed and, um, hit the news, and that's, that's the trend line. That's, this, this, uh, vaccinate or terminate. That's, that's the trend line. Uh, and I think that we ought to, on the 28th, take a vote, formal. So my motion is that we bring back a resolution, uh, of support, uh, reflective of all those words that, um, just been offered, and that we're able to, by resolution, with not taking a, uh, uh, an ordinance, a formal public hearing, but just a resolution of support of our county administrator's stance to vaccinate or terminate.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, listen, Mr. County Administrator, I think we all, uh, appreciate your leadership. I think I want to caution the board though, as we take these kind of steps, um, my support, or lack thereof, would be reflected in the county administrator's, uh, annual review, uh, as, as to how I rated him in my comments there. I think when you get into a position where you start to publicly, uh, take stances on things that your administrator does, that's his authority to do, whether it comes to a thing that he does that we do not agree with, will we do, will we then, at the same time, take that same vote, take that same public stance to let him know that we disapprove of what he's doing? Uh, in this case, I think he made the best decision for his, for our workforce during the, during the very sensitive time, as he, as he reflected, with hurricane season coming up, we cannot afford for our workforce not to be ready, uh, to, to tackle this hurricane season. So with that, I think that, uh, it was very thoughtful and appropriate from his standpoint to make that decision. But I want us to think about, again, very clearly about this, in that, what if it was a decision that we did not agree with? Are we going to go, are we going to sit up here and admonish him and, and take that same vote to say we vote against what you've done as an administrator, knowing that he has the authority to do such? I'm willing to go either way. I just, I, I didn't want this, this point to pass by without us thinking about the precedent we set, not only for this commission, but for commissions that come after us, to be able to do such things with the administrator. Now, we do have the authority with the super majority, as I, as I believe it to be so, that we, if we disapprove to a point that we don't want him here anymore, that we could take such a vote. I hate to, I hate to speak in that tone, but I think we have to look at both sides of this coin. Mr. Administrator, I think you're doing a magnificent job. It has reflected such in every single one of my reviews, and your reviews of the administrator, uh, since he's been our administrator, and I, I, I know that he will lead our workforce in the way that needs to be done. I also think that our, our workforce has done a, a, amazing job at, at, uh, following the leadership of, of our administrator. And so, I just, I didn't want this, this, this place to pass by without us just really thinking about this thing as we set the presence that we're about to set. And I, I, I know as long as I've been on the commission, I don't think the, I don't think we've ever, let me think, I don't think we've ever taken a formal vote on a stance that an administrator could make without our approval. I don't think we've ever done that. Uh, though, in this, in this, in this instance, especially when it comes to, let's say that hypothetically speaking, we get, we, we lose a challenge and there's a $5 billion, uh, thing out there that we got to pay, then I think, then, then it sits in our seat because it becomes a fiscal matter, and we have to think about the fiscal, fiscal side of it. But it sits right now, it's, it's not in that place. So I'm, I'm fine with the vote. Look, hooray. Vince, you led, and you, and you, you're leading us in a way that, that gives us a healthy workforce that's going to be able to do the work that we need them to do during a very crucial time, uh, and season for our county. But I did want to make the point that where we're going, we might want to think about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Uh, and, and I agree with what you're saying. I, you know, I, um, I support what the county administrator's done, um, and, and even despite what, uh, what Governor DeSantis said, uh, in the press conference, I, I still support the action. I, I kind of agree that it may be, may not be the right course of action to, to have a motion to approve or not approve an action that the county ministry had full authority to do. So, but we can give that, I, I can give that some more thought of my own. Um, I, I understand why Vice Chair Proctor is talking about it, but, uh, I'm of the same opinion as you are, Mr. Maddox. Um, Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chair.
Let's do Vice Chair Proctor, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can appreciate, uh, Commissioner Maddox's, uh, comments, and that, for one, is a reason in which I suggested if we could, uh, you know, take, pick up weeks and, uh, let it marinate, uh, and not so suddenly. But when, uh, this is an extraordinary measure, never before, you're right, uh, Commissioner Maddox, never before has our county commissioner acted as county commissioner during a pandemic. Uh, this is an extraordinary measure that he's never, uh, imposed before, and likely nor has Walmart, uh, any of the bigs. Uh, to that extent, uh, for actions he has taken, uh, for our administrator to be selectively, um, um, uh, whatever the right word is there, uh, by a governor, uh, swinging on our administrator, we should circle wagons and not be wimpy, uh, because if he reflects our view, then we should have, uh, vocal cords enough to say he reflects us, and we're standing with him. He's not out there alone. And when our governor swings on him on this particular issue, he's swinging on me, he's swinging on you and all of us who take an affirmative vote, uh, with him. So, um, there's a, there's a moment in life, uh, at times where we draw a line in the dirt and we take a stand. And when you're standing for those things which we know is right, there ought not be either fear, uh, either, uh, inconsistency or equivocation on our part to, uh, do what we know is right and right. So I placed that motion. I hear no second, um, but I appreciate the responses of your, uh, uh, what you've said in support of him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor, and, and I appreciate the sentiment too. I, I know, I know why you, why you, why you're doing that. All right, let's try to pick up the tempo a little bit here, because we, we can bring this home pretty soon, I believe.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dozier, I forgot. You're, go ahead and speak, please.
I'm sorry, I was trying to wait there patiently, um...
I know, I know. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
I, I'm glad the camera is on Commissioner Proctor right now, because, or the Vice Chair, because I might surprise him. Um, I'm going to quote him, "I could not agree more. It's time to circle the wagons, not be wimpy, and if the county administrator reflects our view, we should affirm that with a vote." I absolutely agree, Commissioner Proctor. And I mentioned this during the annual report, because it was significant highlight in the annual report. Um, what I was prepared to do today, and I don't hear much support for this other than Commissioner Proctor or the Vice Chair, um, I was hoping we would simply take a vote to affirm the county administrator's decision to require vaccines for all Leon County employees. Because we, yes, we need that report from the county attorney about legal issues, um, in two weeks, particularly what happens in Gainesville, but right now, county administrator has gotten out ahead of, let's be frank, the White House, incredibly large businesses, conservative and liberal leaning across the country. He was the first and made exceptional comments on national news and in local media to us, to our employees, take, took a really hard stand. And Commissioner Maddox, I, I agree. I mean, this is in the county administrator's wheelhouse. It does not need our vote, but I think it would be significant and important for this board to simply take a vote today to say, "We support that action." There's a different issue here about whether or not we would ever take a vote if we don't agree. We pass policies with county administrator and act. We give them a lot of leeway, and I hope that we would. And in fact, I think we have brought up issues that we disagree with at times, um, on policy issues. That is a completely different subject. This is a unique situation in a global pandemic, and as both the county administrator and the President of the United States have said, it is past time for handouts and other things. We have to have a mandate because this has become such a politicized, um, situation, and we are talking about saving lives and importantly, having an operational workforce. I know this has been difficult for some employees. I think the vast majority have really supported this initiative. So Commissioner Proctor, Mr. Vice Chair, I would absolutely, um, I didn't get to chime in earlier because I thought you were focusing on the next meeting, but I would walk with you. If we wanted to take a motion and have a vote tonight to affirm the county administrator's decision, leave it there just to show a unified stance and have his back going into the coming weeks.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, having heard that, I rearrange my motion from two weeks, and I make the motion that we affirm our county administrator's stance in these political times, uh, that we take a vote tonight. And that's my motion, and I hear second from Commissioner Dozier, I believe.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Um, listen, I, I understand the, the sentiment behind the motion on the table. Um, uh, I, I support what the county administrator is doing. I, I think this motion is superfluous because he has full authority to do it, uh, with his, to have this policy for his staff. Um, but, uh, I want to hear some of the other comments before we come back to it. I think Commissioner Maddox, you're on the speaker's queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Maddox.
While I'm not willing to, uh, take a vote on something that the county administrator has statutory authority to do, as to, uh, pat him on the back or admonish him for doing it, what I am willing to do, uh, what I think is proper, is to make a motion for a proclamation recognizing the county administrator as well as staff for the leadership he's shown and the job staff has done thus far through this pandemic, to include all of the things that we have seen, uh, in the leadership positions that we have taken as a county, all the first that we have done as a county, all the things, again, that people can say Leon County is noted for along the way of this, what, 18, 19 month pandemic, and congratulate the county administrator on leading us and doing a great job. I'm willing to do that, I'm willing to, to support that proclamation. I am not willing to take a vote on something he statutorily, uh, prepared to do instead of presence for us to take a vote against something another administrator statutorily.
Commissioner Maddox, is that a substitute motion?
Thank you, sir.
Is that a substitute motion? I will second that. I will second that. Um, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Maddox.
Sounds good. Um, seeing no other speakers will vote on the substitute motion, all in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is not a substitute motion. The first man didn't, uh...
Mr. Vice Chair Proctor, I'm sorry, you're not recognized, sir. I mean, we're moving to the vote.
Did I make that motion?
Yes, sir.
I withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so the substitute motion has now, is now a motion. Uh, all's in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by myself. Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, would you support the motion?
I, I support it as...
Right. Just confirming. So the motion passes unanimously, seven zero. And we still have one more item from the county attorney. Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, and not to belabor at this point, but I feel like it's a good point of information for the board. In that statute, 381.00316, subsection five, it says that that section does not apply to certain categories of professionals, okay? One of those is a service provider licensed or certified under part three of chapter four, zero, one. For our purposes, why that's important, is that covers our EMS personnel, our ambulance drivers, our EMTs, and our paramedics. So no matter which interpretation of this statute you're taking, whether it's the one that has currently been taken by the state administration, or the one that the currently, current, that this, the county currently has taken about how this applies, under any of those interpretations, we would be authorized to require vaccination of our EMS personnel. I want to make that very clear. Okay? So I do have one other item for the board. Um, earlier in the meeting, it was agenda item number six, which the board approved as part of the consent agenda. Um, you approved the proposed opioid litigation MOU with the state, and you adopted that associated resolution, that unified Florida plan that basically, um, will, uh, direct and dictate the amount of money in local funds we directly receive, how much of those regional funds we would receive, and then how much the state will receive as a result of settlements associated with the opioid litigation, which has to be used for certain specific purposes. The board also, a couple of meetings ago, approved the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan. Um, we will continue to have, as negotiations continue in those class action cases, uh, proposed settlements come up that will need to come to the board for approval. Um, I will always try to include this as agenda items, but because of the timing, we received notice late last week that in the, and I hope I don't butcher the name, Malachdroid. Um, that is one of the largest, fastest pharmaceutical companies in the United States. Um, it has been the subject of, um, thousands of civil lawsuits. Um, as a result of that, they filed bankruptcy in October of 2020. Um, this proposed plan that has now come to us with a recommendation from our outside counsel for approval, um, would resolve all of those pending cases in kind of a, a mega settlement. It's pending before the bankruptcy court now, uh, but under the terms of that proposed settlement as part of the plan, uh, which is before the bankruptcy court for final confirmation, um, it would establish the opioid plaintiff recovery trust, that among other things, would establish an abatement fund to offset the costs of combating opioid addiction and providing support to communities impacted by opioid abuse. The distribution that the, this county would most likely receive as a part of that settlement would be governed by, uh, that unified Florida plan that the board approved earlier this evening. But the deadline to vote on this approval or not of this bankruptcy plan is the 17th, and, you know, in advance of the meeting on the 28th. So I would request a motion and action from the board to authorize me on behalf of the county to approve the plan.
Chairman, I move that we, uh, adopt a motion to approve the plan and allow county attorney to, uh, run full pursuit, uh, in the course which she's outlined to us tonight.
Thank, thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. A motion's been made for Vice, by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox.
What's the information on...
Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Proctor.
Uh, did not that company that filed bankruptcy, haven't they emerged as another company? They not spin off and, 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 and doing something and came up in a new life?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are different, there are so many different companies that are currently in litigation that have had, that have been sued. There are, um, distributors, pharmacy companies, um, you know, there's a lot of different litigation going on. I'm not aware of this one doing that. This one is, again, still in a bankruptcy, and that confirmation is still pending, so they haven't even resolved this. Now, unlike, um, some of the other potential, uh, settlements that are pending, this company would not have to dissolve or otherwise, um, hand over control to anyone else. This would just resolve, um, the, the pending cases related to opioid litigation for this company, but it would continue, to my knowledge.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say, Commissioners and Commissioner Cummings in particular, I, 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 I put this before your, your thought. Um, in my reading, is that this company has, uh, faded, has left a pile, a finite amount of money, a pile for everybody to duke it out and get some. Uh, but this company has spun off and this family, uh, has been allowed to go almost scot-free, uh, and that they have another lucrative and ongoing part of money that was not left on the table. And I feel that we're getting shirked, you know? Uh, they're able to escape, and I just ask if you, um, would pursue and follow if, if that's not the case, and it's just not fair.
Commissioner Proctor, I'm sorry.
Madam County Attorney.
Just as appointment information, that is a different company. This is not this company. I know the company you're talking about because you're talking about the Sackler family. That's a different company. That's not this one.
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so a motion's been made, uh, by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, I believe. Um, all's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dozier, just to confirm, uh, you're, you're voting the affirmative, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Madam County Attorney, is that, complete your remarks?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry for the duration.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda, we've got items from the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing.
Great. Thank you very, very much. Um, all right, items for discussion by commissioners. Let's try to, listen, take as much time as you need, but please take only as much time as you need. Um, and I'm going to, I'm going to mix it up a little bit. We're going to go in this order, uh, unless someone has a great objection to it. Uh, Vice Chair Proctor, Commissioner Cummings, Jackson, Dozier, Welch, Maddox, and then myself. Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I shared with commissioners on yesterday, uh, uh, coming from the article in the, uh, paper, recognizing, uh, Mr. Robert and Trudy Perkins. And in that article, uh, it spoke to the magnificent legacy of Mr. and Mrs. Perkins, and that through a consent decree in 1975, uh, the court ordered something like 23% of, of the city's workforce, uh, be, uh, desegregated and that, uh, black citizens be hired, uh, in all ranks. It also indicated in the article that today the city has 34% of its managers, executives are, uh, reflected, uh, as African Americans, and that in general, the at-large workforce is something like 31%. Uh, seeing those things, I know that we're not a government that likes to be in second, and I would certainly, uh, request, uh, information brought back to note, how do we compare as a government, uh, to the city's ranks of 34% and its, uh, among bigs, and then 31% across the board? And I guess, um, while the court in 75 was looking at race and only race, I think that it's pragmatic and, um, contempt, contemptuous to do to also look at gender. Uh, and I know we've had this three, four years ago, I can't remember, but, uh, it, it just struck a nerve, and I wanted to know that we are not in second place to the city of Tallahassee, uh, in this important area. And I will offer it as a motion.
All right. Motion made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor of the motion. Could, could you restate that motion again real quickly?
Um, that a update information be brought back to us as to our, uh, percentages among the, uh, bigs and the rank and file employees.
Okay.
On the basis of race and gender.
Thank you very much. All's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Do, Commissioner Dozier, what's your vote, ma'am?
In part.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, I, I've squawked on this just a little bit, but, uh, I, um, uh, I believe it was on Friday evening, uh, Mr. Barber, uh, had a, a major event, uh, on Macomb Street, and salutes and shout out for a very successful event, uh, French Town Rising. And as I was, um, passing over and then coming back later, uh, on, um, Macomb turns into Orange, we have an important piece of property right there at the railroad, and we are postured between two brand-new hotels, and there's a lot of energy, uh, right there at FAMU Way and that Roundabout, and the enclave of businesses there, and there are a lot of activity on Gaines Street. We're, we're sandwiched between one of the hottest, uh, human energy spots in town. I would really like for, um, our look at the retreat that we think about Railroad Square and, um, Cary. I know you love it down there, but at 6:30 when I was coming across town, and 8:30 when I was coming back, that right there is the deadest property in that area. I think it has a potential to be, uh, to be rethought in a lot of foot traffic, and I would love for us to see, uh, a rethinking of Railroad Square for the future to fit and be compatible to the multiple uses of human activity in that area. Those things being said, um, is that needed for a motion or something?
Mr. County Administrator, what say you?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Proctor, I just wanted to remind you that, well, there was a bid award on tonight's, uh, agenda, uh, in the amount of $3.4 million, and, and as you all have seen the renderings and the project scope, it is going to be an amazing facility there. It is, it's not, uh, uh, it doesn't even resemble what it will be, uh, when we're, when we're done with it. And of course, it will be the future home, uh, of, of our tourism division. And so we're really excited about that. Couldn't be located more perfectly, uh, than that. And, um, again, just wanted to point it out that it's on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Okay, I think I heard him saying that they're looking at that right now. That's what I heard. Okay, okay, good, good, good. All right. Um, I'm closing my folder. I've got a long list, but, uh, that satisfies me, and I thank you, commissioners. Glad to see everyone back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for a championship meeting tonight, uh, the wonderful report coming from, uh, our administrator for the years of activity, the year-long work of activity, and, um, our staff, Matt, great job all year. Um, Al, and you guys have been wonderful. And, um, my colleagues, you're the best. And Dozier, I don't know what got into you tonight to just pray that they do, sir, but God bless you, Kristin Dozier, for your comments tonight. And food is in the bag, no doubt.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, then Jackson, Dozier, Welch, Maddox, and myself. Mr. Cummings.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of things very briefly. But before I do that, I just want to thank, uh, our county attorney, county administrator, and the staff, and, and I think we need to recognize that the county administrator has an overarching concern about maintaining the health and safety of the county employees. Uh, you know, emergency management service personnel, um, we have a vested interest because, believe it or not, citizens continue, continue to call, uh, even though we're in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, we want to make sure that those services don't go lacking. And I want to, I have a personal, uh, Mr., um, county administrator, uh, example. A couple of weeks ago, I had to call, um, 911 for my mom, 96 years old, and they were there within minutes. And so I think that's a testament to the fact that our services to the public are continuing. They're ongoing. They are phenomenal. They are phenomenal, even though we're in the midst of a pandemic. And I flesh to think of what would happen if any of us, because of COVID, needed those type of emergency services and our personnel were not there because of the lack of vaccinations or because of whatever reasons. We have got to make sure as the county government that we are here to still service the specific needs of our citizens. And I want to thank the County Attorney too and her staff for the great work that they've done. They not only tell us what the law is, but give us the references as well so we can check it ourselves. So I feel, I always feel good whenever we get direction on the law from the County Attorney and her staff. And I think so far, we are on good legal standing as far as what we are doing, what the County Administrator has done. A couple of things. I'd like to ask the Board, however, to approve two resolutions regarding two outstanding citizens here in Leon County. The first person is Attorney Patricia Fournier. She's a great family law attorney. She's worked here for over 40 years and she has given a lot of pro bono services to the indigent population. But she is retiring from the practice of law this week. She's made a great mark, positive mark, in Leon County and done some very positive things in the legal community. So I would like to ask resolution.
Yes, Mr. Maddox.
Just point of order real quick, just to make clarification. I believe we had this meeting prior to Commissioner Cummings coming on board. But resolutions are to support policy stances. Proclamations are to recognize people. So if you could make that a proclamation, Commissioner?
Absolutely. I apologize. That was the right word, proclamation.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson, you seconded that motion, is that correct? So you would agree to that change?
Whether it's a proclamation or...
Sounds good. Sounds good. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Cummings and seconded by Commissioner Jackson, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, ma'am. Thank you, seven zero.
Okay. One other individual who has made a long-lasting impact in this community is Dr. Gloria Holmes. And I'm asking if the Commission would also be supportive of her. She's a great educator. She's been at Bethel Christian Academy over 30 years. And recently, the Media Center was named in her honor. She received her PhD from Florida State University and I believe her master's from Spelman University in Atlanta.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that request for proclamation from Commissioner Cummings.
All right, motions are made and seconded by Commissioner Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The very last item I'd like to mention, it relates to the call meeting that we had last week. And I think I reiterated on the record that I appreciated the meeting. We had the opportunity to converse with citizens, express our ideas about our approach to the pandemic as far as mitigation factors, masks, vaccination, and what have you. But I was highly offended by one of the speakers who came up and he spoke against masks. And I don't know if you all recall or not, but he specifically, in my opinion, attacked me. And his comments were, Carolyn's mask is the biggest mask I've ever seen and it's sticking out and it's doing whatever. Of course, I wanted to address him but didn't feel that that was the proper thing to do, Mr. Chair personally. And I'm not sure if there have been any instances of that thought in the past. And perhaps maybe I'm just an easy target. But I didn't think it was appropriate. However, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to interrupt him and indicate that it was appropriate. So I'm just concerned about the proper protocol when we have individuals that come before us and attack us in a needless manner.
Yeah, Commissioner Cummings, thank you very much for bringing that up. For our rules of procedure, the person who chairs the meeting is required to maintain a sense of decorum. And as you might guess, decorum is a rather subjective measurement, right? So we do the best we can to make the meetings go smoothly. There was one point earlier today where I asked someone to avoid personal attacks. So I understand what you were talking about. I remember that speaker very clearly. It's unfortunate. And one thing we try to do per the rules of procedure here is to maintain that sense of decorum. Everyone who comes, every citizen who comes here has a right to speak and all of us will defend that right. But people do not have the right to infringe upon the rights of others or to undermine the sense of decorum that we need to conduct a public meeting.
So can I just, would it have been appropriate for me to ask you to address the speaker?
Is the speaker still here right now? I mean, I don't...
I'm talking about the incident that happened last Tuesday in our call meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Would it have been appropriate for me to ask, Mr. Chairman, will you direct the speaker on his appropriateness or not?
At that moment, if it's something you feel like I need to address, you are free to bring it up. You know, it was not just directed at you. It was also, the speaker was pointing to all of us. I think many of us, maybe not all seven of us, but talking about our masks.
I'm the only one whose name he called. He said Carolyn's mask.
Yep. I don't recall that specifically, but it is the chair's responsibility to maintain a sense of decorum. And it is rather ambiguous because the sense of decorum is subjective. But we do the best we can. I understand, I understand the comments and how you felt about them. I think we all got a sense of that to some degree as well. But on point? Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner Cummings, as you sit in that seat, you have a right to defend yourself. If you felt offended by the comment and you wanted to say something, you can say something. Or like you said, you could ask the chair to bring that person to decorum. Don't, you know, so the answer to your question, I don't, Mr. Chair, I hate to step, but the answer to your question is if you wanted to, yeah, you could have.
Yeah.
Or if you wanted to address him personally, ask him not to address him in such a manner, you could do that as well. Again, you have the liberty to do either. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And Commissioner Maddox said that perfectly, yes. I mean, you have a right to bring up, you know, to respond to anything that someone says. During the speaker's time, the policy is that we do not speak or respond to individual speaker comments just to keep the meeting, the process of the meeting going smoothly. But you do have that right. You have that right. Anything else, Commissioner Cummings?
I believe so. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, as my history teaching colleague on the end of the dais there will tell you, we have seen the demise of civility in discourse and in disagreements. And that's a sad place where we're at when we are attacked by name and we are limited in our ability to respond back, particularly in publicly elected and public service specifically. I know that, I see Mark early in the crowd. I'm sure he can tell you many instances where his employees have been attacked. I hate that for you and I understand exactly where you're coming from. So I think it would have been perfectly appropriate for you to address him at that point.
I do want to make one proclamation, not resolution, suggestion, motion for Infant Loss Month in the month of October. I'd like to have a proclamation recognizing parents and families that have lost infants.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Very good. I'll remind folks, we do have a vaccination clinic with one of our community partners at Bethel Baptist. They're gonna come out and offer vaccinations and testing along with a second harvest at Fort Riden School in our Fort Riden community this Saturday, September 18th. Yeah, September 18th, nine to two. I want to take just a moment to recognize the Logan Hurst family and Canopy Oaks Elementary School that lost a champion for children this past Monday. And I know all too well what it is like to sit in those shoes, to lose someone to a to a very dangerous and deadly disease that does not knock on your door and say, are you of a political party of one or the other? It has no discernment when it comes to that. It doesn't pick on people because of their color, race, or economic standards. And I think this just demonstrates that a perfectly healthy 40-year-old, unfortunately, passed away from complications from COVID. I look forward to, at the appropriate time, bringing a proclamation back to the Board for approval for that family. But in the meantime, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I know that's right in your neck of the woods as well, Mr. Chair. So thank you. That's all I have for today. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of issues to bring up, but I actually wanted to make a comment on Commissioner Cummings' question about the mask. Ma'am, that comment absolutely stood out to me. I remember it. And it was very disappointing. And I know that it is challenging to be in the chair's seat. You're keeping up with a lot of different things during the meeting. But perhaps all of us, because we will all have or have had a turn in the chairman's seat, maybe focus a little bit more on those times when any person is singled out. And, Mr. Chair, you did that today and I truly appreciate that. I think you did it in the last meeting. So I don't think this is, you have an easy task, having sat there in the past. But I do think comments from the public should be directed generally towards the policy and not towards any individual. So I support your concern about that, Commissioner Cummings, and would do everything I can to have your back. With that, I have a proclamation request for Disability Rights Florida to recognize the week of September 13 through 2021 as National Disability Voter Registration Week. And this would be presented at an outside event.
I'll second that. All those in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by myself, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would support, Mr. Chair. Thank you. The second motion I'd like to make is to have a presentation by LCRDA Executive Director Ron Miller at a meeting sometime in the near future. You all are aware of the North Florida Innovation Labs. County and city through OEV have been supportive of those projects and there's a lot of other great work happening at Innovation Park. And it's been a while since we had a presentation from our executive director. So again, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a motion to have a presentation about Innovation Park in a meeting in the not-too-distant future.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Commissioner Dozier, you're in favor of it, I'm sure?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. The last item was, as you requested, Mr. Chair, the last, in my, several items that I wanted to bring up today about COVID. And I, this has been a challenging subject. I know we don't all see these issues the same way. However, as I said earlier in the meeting, I have had conversations with some in public health and our hospital administration about the need to discuss the data and metrics. What are we looking at? What lessons might we learn from the surge with Delta in August? And we're still in it, but hopefully we are plateauing and the numbers will go down. And importantly, to have that discussion before, and I hope this doesn't happen, but before our numbers were to go back up. Importantly, this discussion does not need to include a mandate or anything like that. These are just data and metrics. But I think we've been discussing for the last 19 months and we have not heard or been able to have a discussion with our healthcare providers. Our Department of Health is very, you know, can provide a lot of information. But I think talking with our hospitals, importantly with Bond and Neighborhood and others about what we're seeing and the lessons learned could help us navigate what may come in the next couple of months. So I'm not sure if I should structure this like a motion. Mr. Chair, I could give it to you or County Administrator the question to see what you plan for a presentation on September 28th and whether or not that would be an appropriate day to invite others who may be able to help us unpack the metrics and lessons learned from the last two months.
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Commissioner Dozier, yes. And I may have this right or not and just straighten me out if not. But one of the things that I was thinking about when I was listening to you there was, obviously, you know that we are engaged with the medical professionals and with the public health officials on a regular basis. And throughout the pandemic, what we could do, and we could do by September 28th, I think is to, at that presentation, potentially bring you what may be a consensus opinion about those metrics and to look at and to present to the Board that may, you know, trigger a closer look as we experience some of the peaks and troughs and additional peaks and that sort of thing. I think that's what you were saying and if that's so, we'd be happy to bring that forward at the next meeting.
Commissioner Dozier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. County Administrator, you heard me exactly correct. And I wasn't trying to be too specific about who might give that presentation. You and I have talked about these metrics and the data a lot in recent weeks. So I think you understand what my question is. And I think the way you framed it, a consensus opinion on the metrics and really allowing us to do, the Board to discuss that and perhaps send some benchmarks for the future would be very helpful for us. So do you need a motion to that effect, Mr. Chair? I'm asking you this.
Well, Commissioner Dozier, just wanted to point out that the September 28th date is a tentatively scheduled public hearing. Our next regularly scheduled Board and County Commissioners meeting is October 12th.
Okay. Well, I won't rehash my comments about our meeting schedule there. Okay, we had a workshop and the second public hearing that night. Well, if we have to wait four weeks for that discussion, we can. We will be meeting for a workshop and a public hearing on that day. So perhaps we could get an update. But if my only opportunity is the 12th, then I will focus on the 12th.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. It's really up to, I mean, we could have a motion on this. It may not be necessary. It's really up to the will of the Board. If you all would like to have an update along the lines of what Commissioner Dozier has requested for the public hearing on the 28th, I think that'd be appropriate. Is there a general consensus on that? We could take a motion if you wish, Commissioner Dozier. But everyone here, I think, is indicating they support that. Mr. County Administrator, is that, good, good, great. All right, consider it done, Commissioner Dozier.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. And I guess the last thing I just have to say is that the concern that you hear in my voice, last week, this week, and you will hear it in the future, is... the future, is because we have to wait four weeks to have this discussion. And I am very nervous about what is going to happen in the next few weeks. So I will leave it with this. If our numbers start to go back up by the 28th, Mr. Chair, I know this is your discretion, and County Administrator, I do hope you will be talking about other ways to communicate to the board or discuss this in a public meeting if the need arises. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And yes, you're right. You know, the County Administrator, County Attorney, and I will be in close contact on exactly what you described, so thank you very much. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to, I'll be very brief. I want to thank our staff for the 9/11 day of service. I did not get to participate in that. I'm not participating in many things because I'm in a classroom during the day, but everything is the first time for me right now, as I'm coming up on my 10-month anniversary here on, or 10-month, whatever. So I think that's a really cool thing that y'all do and that the county does, another example of how great our staff is and our organization. Also wanted to give a thank you to the County Administrator for helping me organize a meeting with Leon County Sheriff's Office and Leon County Schools to address what is an ongoing problem around the community, which is traffic near our schools, specifically at car pickup and car drop-off, which has become a real mess this year with folks hesitant to put their kids on buses. Certainly in the Northeast, we've had substantial traffic backups. And the Sheriff's Office and the school district, I called a meeting together with the assistants of the County Administrator, and we had a great conversation this week. I'm really hoping that we see some solutions to that problem. So I just wanted to thank the County Administrator for helping me organize those various agencies to get together and all the folks from the school district and from the Sheriff's Office that gave us an hour of their time to discuss the problem and come up with some solutions. Also wanted to thank our utility linemen, our Taupan Electric linemen, and our City of Tallahassee linemen and women who went over to Louisiana this month for Hurricane Idom. Continually impressed by any first responders who, while we're all taking shelter, they're running right up to storms. And we also saw that this week with the September 11th, 20th anniversary of September 11th. Lots of poignant, extremely touching things on Saturday in regard to the 20th anniversary of 9/11. So I wanted to give a shout out to our linemen who are out there. When we're all running inside, they're out there going to help people all over the Southeast with these mutual aid agreements. And that's all I've got for you tonight. Thank y'all so much for letting me chat about those things, and I'll look forward to talking with y'all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Welch. We've got Commissioner Maddox, then myself, and then a comment from the County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to take our opportunity to say it's good to be back. And I still say this is the best board in the state of Florida, George serving with each and every one of you. I reiterate the fact that I'm proud of the work the staff has done over the summer while we've been away, and continue to be impressed by just how thorough our County Administrator is. Want to also finally reflect the fact of when the rubber meets the road, if, in fact, we are challenged to have to consider, which I know our County Attorney said we wouldn't, but if we are challenged to have to consider a fine from the governor, Mr. Administrator, I am squarely behind you. That's when a proclamation or even a motion of support is enough. That's when we got to step up and make a hard decision about really supporting what you've done. And I'm squarely behind you and appreciate the leadership that you've taken thus far on the road to us having a ready workforce. Mr. Chair, you've done a magnificent job tonight. I know it's tough, especially in these times. With such heated discussion, people so passionate about one way or the other, how they feel about something, I think you've navigated this year mighty cleanly, and you should be commended for that. So I don't want anyone to let this moment pass without giving you that credit. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, oh, one last thing. Cannot let this opportunity pass, I can't believe you did, Commissioner Partner, without giving the commission, the Gaston County Commission, a little bit of grief over the victory of the Rickers Raiders last week by a few points in the So Bowl over Gaston County. I believe Commissioner Viabisi and the rest of the commission owed me about 15 push-ups over that victory, and so very proud to be out there.
Maybe they can give you a full lap around the track.
Yeah, man, they ain't ready for that part. My babies, my oldest daughter and I is the golden dogs. I had a chance to go out there and watch the game. Very proud of the game that those guys played out there and look forward to them winning many more games. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Maddox, you on the review counting board, and would it be appropriate?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, if you could, at some point, I would like for you to give us an update on whatever voter restrictions may be in place with upcoming elections. I know there's things going on in Texas, there's things going on nationwide, and I just want us to be astute to anything that we might be incurring here in Florida, any costs that you might have to incur. Also, do we have a resolution in place to support the supervisor's exempt status? Are the elected officials exempt, elected voting official exempt status?
Right, next.
Okay, just want to make sure that's being done. But if we could maybe at some point add that presentation to the agenda whenever the supervisor deem it to be the right timing for us to hear such.
Commissioner Maddox, would you be so kind as to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All's in favor of the motion for a presentation from supervisor elections early on voter restrictions and the update on that? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Again, I have a very special relationship with that, man. I've been on the counting board down straight so many times. I feel like I could pretty well work on this staff. So thank you for bringing that back to us. I think this year coming up will probably be pretty different from all other years. Also, last thing, in that, could you include, because I think there was some restrictions there on, I think last time you had the ability for folks to drop off ballots in the box, I believe? Is that correct? I think, if there was some restriction around not being able to do that anymore? Yes, yes. Just, yeah, but I'd rather have a full presentation. Whenever you come, bring it back, just bring it back with you, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Okay, I'll be as brief as I can. First of all, Commissioner Cummings, I apologize for that last meeting. When that speaker had made his statement, I didn't see at that time the distinction between what he was saying about you versus the rest of us, so I apologize. But obviously, you know, the chair, we all, every chair wants to do whatever he can or she can to maintain the decorum, so I apologize for that. Okay. I've submitted a policy proposal to the Florida Association of Counties that would basically mirror what the Florida State Association of Supervisor Elections has as one of their top legislative priorities. What this would do would be exempting from public records requests the personal identifying information of supervisor elections, their deputies and staff, poll workers. This would include, for the staff especially, would include exemptions such as home addresses of these people, spouses' employment, their kids' schools. Those types of things would no longer be retrievable under the public records law. It's something that the Florida State Association of Supervisor Elections is really energetic about for this session. As I'm sure many of you have seen, nationwide, there are increasing threats, physical threats of violence against many supervisor elections and elections officials throughout the country. What this would do would be an added measure of protection to give these folks who are doing good work, just trying to count votes, to make sure that they are as protected as possible. With that, I'd like to, Supervisor Elections, Mark Early is here to answer any questions you might have, and just wanted to leave that open if you have any questions about the policy proposal. But I very much like a motion to basically approve this policy proposal. What that would mean, if this were approved unanimously by the board tonight, because it's not on the agenda, if it were approved unanimously by the board tonight, what that would mean is that we would convey the approval of this Board of County Commissioners to the Florida Association of Counties Conference.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded for approval of the policy proposal by this board. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I guess this is the nature of court officials, which currently are exempted from public information. There are phone numbers, addresses, and so precedent is established for a segment of elected officials called judges, and supervisors would probably step into that same arena of protection, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Any other comments? Supervisor Early, any comments from you, sir?
Mr. Chair, I did address that point. There's a whole section of laws, I'm sure Chastity is aware of, 119.071. There's a whole litany of groups of people that are exempted, including social workers, law enforcement officers, first responders in general, judges, a large list. And with the threats that we've been getting, we're pushing to have our.
At large, commissioners could, you know.
That would not be a bad plan, actually. Yes, yes. I like having Commissioner Maddox sitting there with us. I feel a little safer.
Any other questions for the supervisor? All right. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for considering this.
We'll move on to a vote. All in favor of the motion made by, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Was it Commissioner Proctor made the motion?
Yes, sir.
And then seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, 7-0. Thank you all very much. Moving on really quickly, I'd like to request a proclamation for Lieutenant Colonel George Hardy. He's one of the original Tuskegee Airmen. He's also the first Tuskegee Airmen to be inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame. Motion's been made and seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All's in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, 7-0. Also would like to request a proclamation recognizing October as Manufacturing Month. This is requested to us by Tallahassee Community College. Motion's been made and seconded by Commissioner Cummings. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 7-0. And then another request for a proclamation recognizing EMT Lee Kendall as the EMT of the Year Award winner by the Florida Department of Health. This is amazing. Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor of the proclamation, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And then finally, there's a considerable interest among the folks I've been speaking with around the county on the street outreach program that we approved a couple of meetings ago. We funded it at $375,000. What I'd like to do is a request from the County Administrator, this may not rise to level of motion, but to basically have a status report on that street outreach program as soon as is feasible, as soon as is viable. Mr. County Administrator, what timeframe do you think that might be?
Yes, if we could get a motion on that, just because it would be an agenda item of first status report.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
No, a motion's been made by Vice Chair Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that concludes my remarks. Just wanted to hand it off to our County Administrator for a final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, just wanted to acknowledge the service of Randy Williams, who passed since the last time we were together, beloved EMT of 47 years old, taken way too soon. And for those commissioners who were able to attend his celebration of life service, you'll agree that it was quite a send-off, and we appreciate you having there. To the other commissioners, we know you were there in spirit, and we've heard from you, and I know his family has as well. And again, we just wanted to take this opportunity at this meeting, at the public meeting, to acknowledge his service to Leon County and to, as I've said many times now, let his family know that we're with them. And so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. It was a really nice service. Thank you. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Thank you very much. Have you all have a good night.